Sabrina, if that's okay. Sabrina Wright with Canopy Children's Solutions.
I'll make the motion. We made Mr. Richard one and Canopy number two.
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay. Kent is not here and we do have a few more minutes. So you want to wait? We can do that. If we all, we can stand for the prayer. And we have our favorite person here that does all of our jestings. God bless him. Tony Graham, will you lead us in prayer?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly fathers, we come here today, Lord, we come and we're thankful, Lord, for the blessings that you've given us. Lord, even amongst all the difficulties in hurricane recovery and everything that goes with it, Lord, we are thankful for what you've given us and the life we have here on this beautiful coast. God, we pray today for this, the leaders here, for them to have the wisdom and discernment they need for those who have issues coming before the board. Lord, we pray that there would be a fair and equitable decisions made. Lord, that the coast would continue to thrive as our leaders take us forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. And then Rebecca, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You've all got ETI. There's the man of the hour. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Richard, would you like to come up and please state your name and your address for the record?
Hello, take your mask off, please, and speak loudly. People at home have been complaining that they can't hear us. We'd ask everyone to speak loudly today, please.
As they, especially if they get to the microphone. We don't think the microphones could damage. Pretty far away.
Okay, I'm okay now. I appreciate the board hearing me out today. I'm here on a matter regarding my budget. Some things happened when the budget was approved, which I had not planned on. And we now have a situation where two young men that we hired, who have probably a year, year and a half experience between them to work for the public defender's office are making their starting salary is seventy thousand dollars a year, which is not an excessive amount of money for someone who's starting out in the field and has graduated from law school, passed law, and has practiced for years. But it puts me, it puts us in another situation with some men, two men, Alan Green and Jeffrey Germany, who have been with us for about five years. And they too are making the same amount, seventy thousand dollars. Well, that, of course, does not recognize their experience and their trials and other things that they've accomplished during their time with us here at the public defender's office. And it creates a situation where I have people who are teaching others how to do their jobs, how to try cases and that sort of thing, who are making exactly the same wage as the guy that's teaching them. And that is really not fair. And they have, so I'm here to request the board to add sixteen thousand dollars to my budget for the year so that I can give each of these two men an eight thousand dollar a year raise. And that would, I think, recognize, it's not as much as I wanted, quite frankly. But it is something, and I think it recognizes the fact that they do have the five years of experience and behind it. Each of these men have tried cases in the courts here and have dealt with hundreds of cases. I think I've sent reports to all of you about how many cases we handle every year. And so you're aware of how many cases each of us deals with each year. In any case, that is what I'm requesting you to do, and I'd ask you to do that for me as today possible.
I would, if I may, I make a motion, I make a motion to grant the
A second.
Eight thousand per person, two persons for raise.
Discussion.
Well, I was gonna say that as a public defender, I realize that you all probably have one of the most important jobs in the county because the people you represent most likely cannot afford to go out and hire their own attorney. So because of that, I agree with you 100% that these people need to be bumped up in salary. So I was going to make the motion, but since I was at length.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your, I appreciate your acknowledgement of the hard work that the public defender's office did.
We have, we already did the authorized budget amendment, and also it will be more than that because of the fringes.
Let the motion reflect the budget amendment to reflect those raises plus the benefit called to those raises.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do you want amendment to that motion?
Well, yeah, my motion includes.
Okay, we have a second to that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support you give us, public defender's office. I know it's difficult sometimes, but I appreciate you doing it. Thank you so much.
Are you fully staffed? Or are you still?
Yes, ma'am, we're hiring someone as a clerk right now. We decided who that person would be, and assuming that they'll take the job, we're gonna hire. All our attorneys, we're fully staffed. At least until some of them start retiring. Some of them hope that soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and have a great day. Okay, Sabrina, would you please approach and give it to your members in your direction for the record?
Good morning, I'm Sabrina, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed, that is.
I should've told you. Sabrina, like Chardonnay.
That's correct, I'm Sabrina Wright, I'm the program director at the CAC. I was waiting for the South District manager, but she's running late, so I'm just gonna go ahead and start. You guys are used to hearing requests, and I'm just here to show my appreciation and gratitude today for you guys allowing us to utilize our services and to create a child-friendly environment for clients that we serve. So we put together a candy basket for you guys, just a lot of our activities.
So what do you have for the rest of them? What they gonna get?
What do y'all do?
We serve child, children of mal treatment, I'm sorry. So that's anything from human trafficking, physical abuse, sexual abuse.
How do you service someone?
We offer forensic interviews, medical services, child and family advocacy, and joint collaboration with law enforcement and CPS.
How is that different from what CASA does, or is it?
Well, it's not different. Only thing what CASA is, they're volunteer services, and we're not. We're actually paid, yes, through grants. We're nonprofit, and so we are federal funded.
Do you work through the courts?
Yes.
You help the courts, you interview the children?
Yes. We do work with district attorney.
Sabrina, explain how the district attorney Joel Smith relies on you. When we have a victim of abuse or trafficking, you send, Joel Smith, our district attorney for this county, sends them to you for forensic interviews. It's not just you're kind of a nonprofit, I mean, you're not. You're paid because you do a vital service for our county. Explain that.
Most of our cases do go before a grand jury for indictment.
She said interviews.
Forensic interviews is when a child sits with someone and does the forensic interviews of what happened.
Yes.
With a child safe, certified, interview your child first.
So y'all are the ones we gave more space to.
Yes, ma'am, and that is why I'm here today.
You're welcome.
Remember Joel, Joel White?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. He's my god.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the basket. I think it looks good. I think you should put it on the side. Yeah.
I looked through it already.
Give it to Madam President. Okay, next we have recognized Milton Segara, if I can pronounce that correctly. He is CEO of Coastal Mississippi, and he represents the Coastal Mississippi FY21 marketing plan and budget. And he also has with him today his, where is he? Is he out? There he is, okay, just come on up, please. And if you would. And I do want to introduce our.
For president to say just a few comments.
Yes, I'd also like to introduce our president, which is Mary Spain.
Well, thank you very much. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes. Speak loudly.
Speak loudly, okay. On behalf of our Coastal Mississippi Board and Staff, we want to thank you for the time today. We work very hard, we have a very active board, and we work very hard for tourism. And I want to take just a minute to acknowledge our commissioners that are here today. Can y'all stand, please? No, get to the stand. We have Ms. Brooke Schultz, who is on our executive committee and the vice chair of finance, as well as Rob Stinson, who serves on our executive committee. Kim Fritz chairs our marketing committee. Richard Marsh chairs our audit committee. Rusty David chairs our nominations committee. Bill Holmes is a past president and serves on a number of committees, including financing and tourism. Shirley Dane, who could not be here today, chairs our tourism engagement committee. So we are, all of these folks are working on your behalf. We have, most of the committees meet once a month in addition to our regular board meetings. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Goodbye. It's been a challenging time, and obviously, we all know, it's been a very unprecedented time in tourism. According to the U.S. Travel Association, the latest numbers for tourism, this last week's numbers were down 42% nationwide from where we were a year ago. In the south, it's 38% down with a cumulative loss so far of $144 billion just in the south. So on the coast, we're experiencing a bit of anomaly. While tourism is certainly down, we are exceeding projections. We're about 23% down year over year, so we're very optimistic about that. In fact, the Mississippi gaming, gross gaming revenue numbers for July and August actually exceeded last year's numbers, so we beat numbers, so that's certainly very encouraging. I want to thank you guys for the resolution that you signed in May, for the additional funding. As you know, with your support and a lot of work by a lot of people, we were able to get $3.4 million as part of the CARES Act, the $13.5 million CARES Act Tourism Recovery Fund for the 23 DMOs throughout the state. That money has to be spent by December 31st, so that is a top priority for us, sending that money and making sure that everything we do qualifies and follows the guidelines for that money. So we're gonna go through the plan and the budget. I also want to know, in addition to driving visitation, another top priority for us this year is generating revenue. We need to generate more revenue for, you know, basically to better compete. And we're looking at discrepancies in the occupancy tax that we're collecting now, as well as short-term rentals, including Airbnb and Verbo, as well as OTAs, the online travel agencies, which are Expedia Hotels.com. So we're taking a hard look at those things as well. And in this post-pandemic world, another important priority for us is community awareness. We know that, you know, we want the community to be aware of the important role that tourism plays in our economy. So we're putting effort to, basically, you know, building a campaign, which we have not, not that I'm aware of, but we've ever done before, a local campaign, thanks to the Tourism Recovery Funds, basically educating the community about the role tourism plays and the impact on our quality of life. So with that, I'll turn it over to Milton, and we'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you so much. Thanks for volunteering. Every commissioner here is volunteering.
Thank you very much, good morning. As Mary said, this has been a, how do we call it? You know, very difficult, but full of opportunities. We can't complain. I would like to start on a different way. This is something that Mary and I would discuss on Friday. And because of SADA, you know, we lost the beautiful sign right at the 6:05 on US 90. I would like to propose and request the board to see if we could do something together. And instead of putting the Mississippi off coast, put the new sign with Coastal Mississippi. And I think that's gonna be great, you know, Coastal Mississippi is becoming the brand of this region. So just for you to consider, we're so happy. It's a beautiful, iconic place. So I don't know, that could be a good opportunity for all of us.
We lost the gazebo too, but I think we found it.
It was right there. I saw it on the.
It was right down there at the castle.
Yeah, I kept it, you know, it's his, now it's gonna be the new entrance to the.
Yeah, I see that.
To the call this in.
So because we lost it in a storm, maybe we could be reimbursed by FEMA, correct? To fund that, or no?
We're gonna discuss that later.
Well, we can try, but I'm not sure that's.
It's just an idea, I think it could be.
Yeah, we need to request.
People, people go there, take photos, you know, social media opportunities. So that could be something that we could do. But let's go to, to some information here. As Mary said, this year was really full of challenges. We started with a water intrusion, HAB situation in our beaches, you know. So it took the first portion of the, actually, the entire summer and the first portion of our fiscal year, fiscal year '20. But the good thing is by February, we were having the best year in the last five, five years of the coast. And you'll see that in a minute. Also, as you know, obviously, the impact of that, and then the pandemic, and then the weather situation that we had. I mean, it's been a year full of challenges. So how we, as a destination, can come back after something like this? In terms of the pandemic, we immediately, we did three things that I think it was very important. The first one was we reached out immediately to the marketplace, and we told them, please stay at home. Stay home. When you're ready to travel, we'll be here waiting for you. That was the message. That message, as a matter of fact, is against our DNA to promote and invite people to come and visit us. But at that time, based on the travel sentiment, not about what we thought, what the consumers were telling us, it was the right thing to do. Then we had the opportunity to have the casinos coming back very soon. By May, we had the casinos back. And the other thing is that we never stopped engaging with our regional market. We kept the communication. We paused the advertising for a couple of months. We started back in June, and the rest is history. We have seen a good, when you compare what the others destination has been going through, the numbers we have seen are very positive. As a matter of fact, in March, in April, the projections of our organization in terms of our budget was that we're gonna be pretty much wiped out. I'm really happy to tell you that we finished the budget with, this year, with a surplus of eighty-five thousand dollars and could be better, after all the specific administrative message we took and put in place. So some key performance indicators, obviously, you'll see a lot of red, but it's, even though it's red, it's not as bad as we have seen in other places. And as Mary said at the beginning, the overall nation is 42% behind. Non-casino rooms sold, 12% behind. Again, this is fiscal year '20, from October 1st, 2019, to September 30th, 2020.
Milton, though, not all rooms occupied or sold. Do you have a breakdown of those two?
Yes, we can, actually, yes. The reason why we do this, room sold is maybe, it's always referred to as paying rooms occupied by the comp rooms that are at the hotel. That's why you have the two different, non-casino and casino, and the last column is when you put all of that together. But still, we are a market of, as you can see, in excess of 3 million room nights, which is, normally, it's more than four, but again, under the circumstances, it's not bad. Occupancy, I'm gonna refer to the overall, it's the last column. It's 15% from 73.3, 73.4 to 62.2, and this is overall for the coast. The rate, look at the non-casino, only 6% behind. Casino was up only 1% over this period, from 87.66 to 86.55, pretty much cents. So that's very, very positive. The tax receipt, obviously, less occupancy, same rate. We had 22% behind, 3.3 versus 4.5. We were able to manage throughout the year in conjunction with our staff, which, by the way, I would like to recognize Karen Connor, our director of marketing. We have Pam Tomososki, our director of finance, Sam, and I don't know if Erin is here. Erin Rosetti here, our director of communications and engagement. They did a phenomenal job. And in conjunction with our finance committee, Carla Todd and Brooke Schultz, an entire committee, we were able to take the decisions to make sure we stay afloat, and we did it. That's a very important collective accomplishment that we did.
If I may, what exactly were your payroll numbers?
I will have to.
Are you, you wanna wait to get to the budget?
Yes, we're gonna go at the end of the budget, yes, sure. We can go and check that.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking.
The last slide here is the budget. So you'll see exactly how much is that payroll. Gaming revenue, as Mary was saying, overall sports, betting, wager, it's up. Airport, no surprises, even though Clay has been doing a great job on his team. This is not about the airport, this is about people are not ready to travel right now, the flight, people are driving, which for us, the other side of the destination is very positive. In terms of jobs, 14% behind, again, better than the rest of the nation. Historical comparison, here you have three years, four years, and 2020, including 2020, obviously, from January to September. And you see the growth year after year, and obviously, 2020 was an impact on slowing down a little bit. But we feel very comfortable that this is gonna go the right direction. The marketing plan, I think you saw this when you went to the first meeting with Mary as our new president, but pretty much, this is what's gonna happen. This is a timeframe that is gonna take us until 2023, maybe 2024, in which we'll have an initial recovery, which is happening, which is leisure. We're seeing that, especially drive, which is pause. 79% of all the people that comes to the coast are coming by car. The secondary recovery, we'll see small and medium-sized groups. And a little bit more down the road, we're gonna talk about groups and conventions. But we're gonna start seeing some small and medium-sized groups coming in 2021 and 2022. Big groups, most likely 2022, 2023. So that's something that we need to factor in, in everything, in all the conversations with the convention center, which we have done so far. And in the long, the final recovery, more 2023, 2024, more international, large events, we don't depend that much from international business, so that shouldn't affect us that much. This is a potential, how the GDP will react. This is the coronavirus, look at the D, and this is 2024, to get back pretty much to 2020 levels. If we have a second wave, then this is the curve right here. So as you can see, and this is numbers from Tourism Economics, which is a division of Oxford Economics, which we retain them to help us in budgeting and all the forecasts for the coast. As I said at the beginning, we are using data, research. We have been in this business for a long, long time, but this is a new, it's a new ballgame. So we're going back to doing research on locals, on meetings, on consumer sentiment, on leisure, on all the strategic partnerships to make sure we have the right information to craft the budget and the strategy. Two things, very important. Right now, driving and visit friends and family, it's key. And friends and family is the second largest market for us. The first one is gaming, which is like 40, 45% of all the visitors. Then this one, which is like 25, 28%. So those two, in which we're so strong, is helping us tremendously to come back very strong. And obviously, then, they need the lodging properties to be clean, and they have a program in place. People will go to places that they feel safe, and we've been able to communicate that, our partners, the destination, through the destination health promise. And that's something we're gonna keep using as another asset of the destination. This one is, we wanna come back really strong, and we have identified certain areas in which we're gonna be investing the money that we have, not only the room tax, but as well, as Mary said, the COVID-19 funds that we got, year-round marketing, tactical investments in vertical markets that you'll see, partnerships, aggressive public relations, local community, they need to know exactly what is their role in this new tourism landscape. And research, many, many research that is gonna help us to really understand what's going on. The target audiences, the people that is ready to travel, regardless of the age. We have millennials that doesn't wanna travel right now, and you have senior citizens that are ready to travel. If they wanna travel, we're gonna talk to them. Very simple. And try to provide that level of comfort, that emotional connection that they can come and enjoy the time here. The media strategy, and this is very important. We're gonna keep doing the Coastal Mississippi, the Secret Coast Campaign. But also, what we're doing is, if we know that gaming is our number one market, and outdoors and leisure is the second one, and people, when they come here, they feel safe, that we've been like, we're using an ad that we've been, you know, social distancing since day one, because if you come and visit us, you have room to room, and that's what people are looking right now. So let me show you one specific 15-second ad that we're gonna, we're running right now, and it's a vertical for just gaming. We're doing, I don't know if this is the first time or not, that is not relevant, but we're using gaming as the most important message right now to bring people. Let me show you. Casino lovers love Coastal Mississippi. 12 casino resorts, each its own world, brills, flavors, experiences, and all now safely open. Because it's never that idea to play safe.
Where are you showing us?
TV.
Where? Where on TV?
Southeastern region. All that within less than a six-hour drive radius.
New tactics, really important. We are, we launched a brand partnership with Guy Harvey, and that is something that is gonna help us tremendously in the conservation, fishing, outdoors message. He's gonna come here, he's gonna do a couple of things with us. They're gonna do a very, an emblematic T-shirt with red fish. He's gonna design a red fish, and it's gonna be a collector's icon type of T-shirt. The community building, you'll see what we're running right now. It's very simple. There is no tourism without healthy communities. That's it, that's the end of the game. So we have to make sure, we talk to them, that number one, they understand their role into all of this. We're inviting people to come. I wanna make sure they understand that we care about their safety and they're healthy. So we're doing that. And in technology, we're doing a phenomenal investment, primarily for the meetings and conventions. We're doing 360 virtual tours, touchless pass attractions. It's something that is gonna change in 2021, the way people interact with us in terms of a destination as a client as well. So this is the app. Coastal Mississippi presents the Bonnie's Secret Coast Contest. Send a video or snap a picture of your favorite secret places, showcasing the safe and healthy ways to experience Coastal Mississippi. Simply go online, submit your challenge, or your share of ten thousand dollars. And with this, what we're trying to do is to make sure, number one, that people understand this is a tri-county effort, and number two, to help us to generate some footage and engagement with the destination. And right now, we have, I think, 35 videos submitted online, a little bit more than 200 photos, and some people will win some money. And we hope we can use that particular footage for potential opportunities with Coastal Mississippi. In terms of consumer strategies, obviously, and all of this you have, and you have in with you, you have the complete marketing plan and also an executive summary, which is the description of the first slide that I briefly touched. But again, continue to foster relationship with notable media representatives, develop programs to go up brand, those are some of the things that we're gonna be doing with consumer strategies. It's a whole section of what we're doing, so please take a look. In terms of social media, make sure we, the personalization, the flexibility, the connection, and creativity that this brings to any particular user, and us as a destination, we're gonna maximize that to make sure we reach, we inspire, engage, and connect with new and existing prospects and visitors. So social media is something that has been doing great. It's under the leadership of Erin Rosetti and her team. So the numbers that we have seen in terms of. So the numbers that we have seen in terms of again engagement is much better than the last couple of years. So we're we're really excited with these possibilities. These are some examples of how we promote. And we have done this with each and every county, how we promote. And here are five about the Harrison County, which, by the way, in 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 the tri-county balance that we have, a five eighty-six percent of the business and revenue come from the Harrison County. So eighty-five, eighty-six percent, if I'm not mistaken. But again, the the idea of having this tri-county is to make sure that we, understanding the importance of each and every one of the of the of the counties, we can create for the visitors. They really don't know about where's Jackson or Hancock or Harrison, that's something we manage and and we will continue doing that. But the good thing is that when they come, they come to Coastal Mississippi. And it it's very simple, if you come to Coastal Mississippi, and you came either from the east or the west, most likely you're gonna stop at some point in Harrison County. That's that's the way it is. You know, you have most of the rooms here, you have most of the activities as well. You have from gaming to non-gaming museums, so many activities that it's, that's why.
The most miles of public beach. The most miles of public beach.
Absolutely. And and that is something that we understand, we value that, we protect that. But I think the tri-county model has been so good for for the coast that I'm really happy. When this was decided a few years ago, all the counties were together, were in to make sure we can continue that.
I was gonna ask you, Milton, are there any organizations in any of the counties that are operating separately from Coastal Mississippi, our group, advertising or competing with y'all in reference to getting people to visit their particular county as opposed to Coastal Mississippi?
What we have.
I know we don't have one in Harrison County, I was curious about the other two counties.
Well, what you have is, obviously, you have Chamber of Commerce that they promote, they do things. In terms of tourism, as you know, we had a relationship no longer in place with Hancock County, in which they had a board, tourism board. And they have done certain marketing efforts locally, I should say, and in certain markets, the same way, excuse me, the same way in in Ocean Springs. The Chamber of Commerce and mainstream, the Office of Tourism, they have done certain activities to promote what they had. To a point in which affect us, I wouldn't characterize that 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 level. The the level of reach, the level of funding, the level of knowledge that we have, and the contacts and the support that we have in different segments from agencies to technology. It doesn't doesn't create like a competition for us. In terms of leisure, very important, strong social media campaign, traveling target advisors, really important. Why? Because people is looking how this is gonna go from now on. And travel advisors will be a key sort of information to clients, so we need to talk to them immediately. And we're gonna do it with a special campaign. Obviously, the digital marketing efforts and sales efforts with Expedia and the other online. We have done extensive co-op advertising with them, bringing phenomenal return investment to to the coast and at the partners that has participated. Market analysis and the motor motor coach. That's an area in which we need to see how this is gonna evolve, you know? And they are doing those assessments, we are hand in hand with them normally from, just from us. We have more than a hundred motor coach trips a year coming to the coast. So that's something that right now is non-existent. They are reconfiguring how they're gonna continue doing business. And when that happens, we'll be there for them or with them. And also provide sales calls to our local partners. That's something, excuse me, that's something that I think is gonna be great if we move forward. How can we, with local partners, extend the reach that we could have, not only with advertising dollars from us, but also with advertising dollars for from key partners? Meetings and sports, this is a huge change. What we're seeing is that, obviously, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, it's it's a big loss in 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 meetings and conventions. We all know that. Twenty twenty-one, we'll start seeing small, medium-sized groups, hybrid, in which most likely is gonna be regional. People will prefer to drive to meetings than flying at this point. That should happen more twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. In the meantime, what we're doing is, we have re-engaged with all the local clientele that we have. Seventy percent of all the business that is coming here for groups is repeat business. They know us, they have planned with us, some of them multi-year contracts. So what we have done immediately, we've been doing this for four to six weeks or so, maybe a little bit more, is to re-engage with them, say, hey, we're here, how are you? Tell me, what are you gonna do, what we're gonna do from now on together? And then, we are bringing additional staff to the organization in twenty twenty-one, we're in that process right now, to see how can we can make more stronger the coverage in the market, to attract more groups to to the coast. So that will happen.
Are you looking at the state associations, like American Bankers Association, the Bar Association? Those groups, we lost a long time ago, our friends to the east.
Yes.
I'm wondering if you could go talk to them, maybe see about.
Well, when when we do this.
And getting them to come back here.
I I can assure you, we will talk to them and some others, but right now, we're more targeting some regional businesses and and perhaps from the same association, maybe the regional chapter. Because it's gonna take some time until we get to that level, and not only for us, but for New Orleans and and Mobile and Miami and Las Vegas as well. There is, there is a, from the meetings and conventions, right now, the meeting planners are saying, let me, let me take a look what's happening. I don't think my my attendees are ready to fly and do the five thousand, three thousand to twenty-five hundred groups right now. But if I can do regional, that people can drive in conjunction with hybrid, in which digital meeting, and we have, we've been discussing that to provide that to the destination, then they will consider. But this is gonna take some time, Supervisor Martin, it's gonna take some time, yeah.
And I gotta question.
Just quickly too, your spot on terms of Mississippi bar, we are in talks, it looks very promising to bring that business back.
Well, that's what I was thinking, and thank you, Mary, because my point or my thought process is, and I promise I'll shut up. Is they may not bring the whole ten thousand group, but they may be willing to do smaller groups. And I think we need to probably pull a sympathy card out and take advantage of that.
And my question is, do we have someone that is working on that now? Anybody in convention services?
Yes, ma'am.
Doing exactly what she.
Yes, we have, we're gonna, you're gonna see one sales manager. We had one, she is now out of the office, she just gave birth, a beautiful girl. But we are, we already receive a few resumes to start selecting the person that will come in and go for that particular market.
Do you not have anybody present, like?
No, but the market is is not alone. I mean, we've been following up with existing people that we have. This is what we're sending to our local clients.
Welcome to Coastal Mississippi. Our warm welcomes are as plain as our sixty-two miles of scenic shoreline. We know times have changed. That's why we equip our partners with safety guidelines, leading agencies, to ensure a healthy visit for you and your group. That's our promise to you. With state-of-the-art meeting venues, over fifteen thousand hotel rooms, and wide open spaces, perfect for social distancing. We're ready to get back to work and ready to help you plan your next event in Coastal Mississippi.
So again, meetings and conventions, key for us. In a good year, maybe from four to eight percent of all the room nights that are coming to the coast are related to meetings and conventions. And even though perhaps it's a small number, but we have key, important partners that at that eight percent, that five percent is significant for them. The Convention Center and some of the other hotels that have devoted significant amount of time, effort and money for the for the meetings and conventions market, yes, sir.
For me, those advertisements that you're showing there, in what major cities in the southeast region are those being played?
The ad is, we have, and we have a record.
Yeah, these are targeted specifically to insert to meeting planners within the southeastern region. So, I mean, it really depends on where the meeting planners are located. So I can't really say specifically Atlanta, but we do know there's a concentration of those within the Atlanta metro area. We know that they're in Charlotte. So again, I can guarantee that those ads are being served to meeting and event players in in Charlotte. In Texas, in Dallas, in Houston, they're being served there. So again, concentrating on where those meeting and event planners reside, and that's where the ads are being served to them.
Plus the list of clients that we have that we know, and we're serving this type of information to them, plus calls and visits, if if possible.
I have a question on on the local, on the local advertising.
Yes.
We are reaching our demographics, kind of having a diversified portfolio in terms of advertising, right?
Yes, sir.
We're doing television, we're doing local print, and we're doing local radio.
With all different.
Different.
Demographic, yes.
Reach, reaching out to the urban sector.
Actually, Mary and I had a conversation about that. That's on their agenda for this advertising.
Yeah, we received, maybe like a week, a week and a half ago, we received a proposal that is gonna be presented to the marketing committee for their evaluation. Yeah. So this is the budget. Here you have two columns, the operating budget here, this is room tax revenue. And this is the Tourism Recovery Fund, which is the three point four, pretty much the amount. And so, this is only from September to December. That's what we're doing right now. All the efforts we're doing is, and all the, all you have seen, it's pretty much very bad.
Restrictive for camp, right? In reference to, you have to spend that on certain items, that's not, can you use that money just generally?
No, sir, this is specifically.
Restrictive.
Yes. It's only for marketing initiative as described in the law that created this.
No salaries, no.
They have a potential reimbursement, in our cases, like five percent. That goes to the reimbursement of the new activities that staff was able, I mean, was forced to do because of this, that's changed what they were doing.
But you can pay for that, yeah?
Yes, sir.
I had a question as to how you're projecting that. I mean, I know you have a certain amount of money there, but how do you project?
Yes, very important question.
Your, your visitation and.
Absolutely. Very important question. What we did is, we started working, our team, the finance committee, and we did, Ms. Rocco, three different scenarios, based on baseline, worst case, and best case. And we factor in all the information available in the marketplace regarding the nation and specifically the coast. We use certain analysis as the SDR, which is Smith Travel Research, which is a worldwide organization providing information on on hotels and destinations in terms of occupancy and rate and visitation and demand and supply. But also, we took, and this is something I'm I'm so grateful to the board, we took an additional step and we hired a company, it's called Tourism Economics. And they work hand in hand with us, with all the information that they do have, and they are worldwide organization. And we asked them to do this specifically for us as a destination. And they took all the necessary data available, plus the data they had, and they come up as well with three potential scenarios. And we took the most conservative scenario. And I can show you, we have plenty of information on that. This is something we discussed on Friday with the Harrison County delegation. Because we can tell you, and this is something we'll have available for the next twenty-two months, from now until the end of twenty twenty-two, all the data regarding revenue, occupancy, jobs, you name it, and how this is gonna move forward. And at the end of the day, we we received three scenarios like this one. And we opted to follow the most conservative one, which is the one that put us in the three point three, three point four million dollar. So we feel, when the board approved this budget unanimously, it was based on specific information, not only the ones that we got, but as well the one that the expert in the industry under this new, you know, way of doing budgets and everything, they took that in consideration, so.
And how many employees do you have?
Twelve.
You have twelve?
Yes, ma'am.
How many did you have?
We had seventeen. And and we have like, I think, five or seven part-timers for different events, but seventeen was the number, full-time.
But currently, you have twelve.
Twelve.
So the one point one million is for twelve people?
Yes. And one more that is there, which is the the additional sales manager that we haven't hired yet.
Let me ask you, Mr. Cigar, on your year-to-date KPIs that you're measuring tools, everything has decreased from six percent to fifty-three percent, with one exception, which is casino ADR, which I can see probably, which went up about three percent. But yet, you started an employee tuition reimbursement program. Explain the reasoning behind it.
Sure, absolutely.
If all your stuff, your revenue is down, basically, your measurements are down, what do you hope to gain with an employee tuition reimbursement?
Keep developing the talent that we have and retention of the talent we have. But let me tell you, also, those are, if the money is not available, we can stop that. The thing is this, when when you have such a small group as we have, the idea is, number one, to keep that talent and make sure that under the new circumstances and the new rules of the game, you can make sure you're training that people. And we're making sure to provide an opportunity for those employees that opt to do that, and we reimburse certain amount. I think this year, how much the amount that we reimbursed?
Yes, that was started at the beginning of FY twenty before the pandemic.
But you haven't stopped it, according to.
We reimbursed two thousand dollars during FY twenty to two eligible employees.
So in anything, like I can get a banking degree and I get reimbursed?
No, 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 no.
Tourism is like.
It's related to what we do.
There's a specific policy.
Specific policies, yes. And they have to comply with certain grades and, you know, it's it's not just to, you wanna do now cooking or or, I don't know, something else now.
Directly related to your job, your job description.
So Milton, at one point one eight four for salaries, does that mean your twelve people are making an average of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars? Ninety-eight thousand? That's what my calculator says three times, so.
Yeah, you can, you can calculate that that way, but what we do is, we have different level of expertise in the organization. But the good thing is that, when you compare, and this is, let me take you to this point. This is the percentage of this, of the total revenue. And when we do, what we're trying to do is always to be better than the national average. And in in this community, the DMOs across the nation, across the world, that number is forty-five, fifty percent. And in this one, which is where you should put the money, which is the fifty-four percent, which is the marketing, we're pacing much more ahead than the rest. So we're, we're keeping retaining good, specific professionals in this in this particular field, but also making sure that we put the money where we need to get the return on investment. And that's why you have seen that we've been able to, number one, stop the bleed as as some of the destinations and move forward and get right on track for future years to keep developing and keep growing.
How many, how many of these people are, how many of these people are in sales? Of the twelve?
Five. Because we have marketing and sales, and you have director, system, and three managers, plus one, it's six people in total, of which three are sales. The sales and marketing department has six people.
Just the overall sales, convention sales, any kind of sales?
Exactly. That's up to date. Two right now and one more that is gonna come, yes.
But three are.
Yes, three are positions within the sales, sales chart, yes, running session on chart.
So in August, when all other departments under the county and all other organizations come to us to approve their budget, they give each person's name, how long they've been with us, how much money they make. So when I'm looking at one point one eight million for twelve people, and it comes out to about ninety-eight thousand, we would request that you would do like other departments, give the name, location, how long they've been there, what they do, and how much they each make. We've had thousands of people laid off, we have sheriff's deputies that make a smidge compared to this. I think we need to know these things.
Absolutely.
And why didn't you come to us in August or September? I'm curious, was it, maybe the budget wasn't done yet, or?
No.
Did we ask them to wait?
No. Pam, correct me, but I thought you did submit a budget, did they not? Back in August when we had budget hearings?
No, I don't think they had.
No. And this started October first, and we're November ninth. So you've been, you know, I'm just curious, why we didn't come hear about this sooner?
The budget was approved September. Our budget was approved by the board in September. And what we do, Commissioner, Supervisor Powers, is that we go, as soon as it's approved by our board, we go county by county. And we reach out and we were trying to secure as soon as possible the date, as we have done it in the last few years. That's why we tried to do it immediately, October, or beginning of November, so you have that as soon as possible. That's why we tried to do it immediately, October or beginning of November, so you have that as soon as possible.
So can you send us a list of your employees, their length of employment and what their salary?
Yes.
That I think would.
That'd be great.
Can they also include the fringes too, because that would make it, you know, make it up to being the $98,000 or whatever.
Probably about 18% of that thing is fringes.
Yeah, it's gonna be fringes.
Yeah, the total, the total wages. First wages are $875,000. Retiree, $142,000. And then you have payroll taxes, workers' comp, employee benefits of 94, and then some administrative fees. So all of that is in the 1.2.
Are they, are they included in yours as well?
Yeah.
Yes, we.
Yeah.
PERS, 11.17.4.
But, but you're not in, but you're not included in our insurance?
No.
They have your own.
No, no.
They're still, they're in their own.
Yeah, I always wondered about that.
But let me, let me.
Would be included with the county since you're.
Well, for one thing, it's three counties, so why would it make it include Hancock and Jackson? Why should we?
Well, yeah, we, yeah, we think it's.
Well, we're very wise.
And if I may, Madam President, and especially Supervisor Powers, we, we understand what you're saying. That's very important.
Yeah.
Our team, all of our commissioners, not only the ones from Harrison County, but as well Hancock and Jackson, they, they task, and they do a very rigorous analysis of the budget, based on the revenue, based on the talent. But I can tell you, and it's very important to, to distinguish here, that this, we, we pay from the room tax, the room tax. People using their personal disposable income that decide to come and visit our hotels, based on the efforts that we do. This is not a tax that is, is going to go against schools or something like that, or the cherry, as you mentioned, those are things that, I mean, we're all for it, and we hope that they can get the best possible benefit and support like you do. But this is money that is coming from visitors, and we take that money and we reinvest to make sure they come back and we keep growing. This is a 3.3 billion dollar industry in our coast. And we generate that revenue based on the efforts to make sure that people come, they pay, and that money comes, and it's splited between us and some other organizations as well, including the convention center to pay the, the bonds that they do. So I understand your point, but believe me, it's a, this is something we take very seriously, and whatever information you need, certainly you will get.
Thank you.
Would that include marketing and advertising expenses and contract services, operating expenses? It'll all be broken down?
If you want, yes, we have that information.
It'd be broken down except for the pay low.
And not the marketing.
The marketing and advertising.
I'd like to see it.
All right.
Well, finally, what we have done, we would like to, for you to consider and approve our budget resolution from this board for this fiscal year 2021 budget.
You've heard the, the.
Why would we need to do that?
First, the discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the budget.
I'll second the discussion.
Do you have any discussions? I don't. I'm just saying for you, I don't have.
I was just curious, why do we have to approve it if it's?
Yeah, why do we have? We approved it in September.
I don't know. We might have talked to Tim.
Are they changing?
Part of, part of the local bill that created tourism commission.
Or at least acknowledgement of the budget and something like that, and that, that will, that will make it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You what?
An acknowledgement, I mean, so.
Well, I don't know. I would like, I can't recall. You, maybe y'all, you can address it. In the creation of the Gulf of Tourism, is it required in that legislation for each board supervisor to approve the budget?
Mr. Lander, it's in the operating agreement.
Okay, which in the text of the motion?
Well, the operating agreement relates back to the legislation, but.
So we do need to.
Operating agreement, you know, creating and confirming the budget approval.
That's what I thought. I was kind of on that part of it, so the motion, you'd have to approve the budget.
The motion is second discussion, further discussion. Just that we do want to see the complete budget as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can we amend the motion pending the information we were pressing?
Y'all gonna do that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The motion is second, pending further information. All those in favor signify by saying yes. All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Right, under report.
Who would you find first?
Motion to amend the budget to recognize Frank Bordeaux.
They're not here.
She's not here yet. I had liked to amend the budget, I mean, the budget, listen, amend the agenda to recognize Frank Bordeaux from ReXSI Insurance to discuss the county property renewals and workers' compensation. Are you ready?
I am.
Okay. You name and address.
Should be on. Is it red?
It's red.
Okay.
You name and address.
Frank Bordeaux, 11633 plus lane, Gulf Coast. I'm coming to y'all today. We are, the market is as hard as we discussed it was going to be. It's getting more difficult for all lines of coverage. And so we will be last minute this year. We're having pushback in our property markets, that the evaluations of our properties are too low based on current construction cost. So we were, we're pushing back on them on that. Our liability carrier, Brit, who's been very good to us for a number of years, their premiums are coming in flat, but their coverages are less than what we've had in the past. And so we're going back and forth with those folks. I met with the association, well, I take that back. I met with Derek Charette to talk about the workers' comp. Obviously, we know there's two separate, and last time I was here, I guess there was a little confusion. The supervisor association has split. You have the comp people that handle the comp program, and then you have the supervisor association that handles the PNC program.
And they ask that the comp program is completely independent of the supervisor association.
Correct. And so your supervisor association has been very vocal and very willing to work on trying to create something on their own. That has not happened to date. So we are looking at our own issue, or our own program. However, during COVID, the carriers, the comp carriers that you would typically use, Safety National and some of those other Midwest, they have all declined to write any counties right now, the claims in the comp market, and we're not seeing this in Mississippi. And I, and I've explained that. We are, we are not seeing an explosion of comp claims due to COVID. But the global insurance market and reinsurance market for workers' comp are seeing those sorts of claims. And it's, and so they're out of pure fear. We're having issues on that. We do have, I've asked safety to look back at it, and travelers is also looking at the entire program, the ALA. The issue with that is we have such broad coverage with Brit as it relates to the, the y'all's liability and law enforcement liability, we have to get travelers to try to come in. So long story short, I'll probably come see you next meeting, and we're going to have more information. And then it's going to be, we're going to be last minute in December before we are able to present the final program. It's a really rough market.
In your opinion, we got to pay more?
No question about it. It's just the limit.
They won't write, we're going to end up paying.
What, what we are trying to do, what we're having to do, if you have a layered property program, we're having to replace layers, fire people from different layers, move them around. And then from a casualty standpoint, we are, we are trying to make sure that our limits and our coverages are as broad as they were last year without paying any more money. On the workers' comp, I think it's going to be very difficult. I have expressed to the supervisor association y'all's frustration with the program, and that I would imagine, I would hope that they will try to do the right thing by y'all. I provided them y'all's claims information, the profitability of the program over the past 10 years, and explained to them that when the option comes, and it may be this year that we do have an option, that the board is wanting and willing to move.
I don't understand workers' comp that well, Frank, but I thought that if our claims were down, based on our claims, that our costs would go down.
We're in that pool.
Or, or is that true, or is it taken in a general, broad, other people as well?
Being in the.
I thought the individual entity that was being insured on the workers' comp, its, its claims would determine its cost. Is that not the case?
Being in the fund that you're in, they're going to take into consideration our county's claims, but they're also going to take into consideration the entire program's claims when they're purchasing their reinsurance. And so I do know the reinsurance market is hardening.
That's, that's what you.
Yes, sir. So, and we've talked about this in the past, the best thing would be to go self-insured on our home. The law doesn't allow us to do that. We can join with two or more counties. And I, I explained to Derek that may be a possibility, that we work with Harrison, or Hancock County and Jackson County, and form our own Southman City Pool.
Is there another pool out there that we could join? Like the.
The municipal.
I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah.
Well, you have the municipal fund, but the comp commission is very wary of taking one, from one fund to another fund, just because ultimately it will hurt the fund. Truth to be known, we leave.
It's gonna hurt them.
It hurts them. Hancock County left.
Right now it's hurting us by staying.
Correct.
Something a little.
Hancock County.
Hancock County left two years ago.
And who were they with?
They were travelers. Now, keep in mind, Hancock County, I mean, we're much bigger than Hancock County. And so, but I will say, our, over the past 10 years, our claims are relatively not good, no, low.
Well, keep shopping, cause.
We're, we're working hard. We had, you know, I'd say prior to two months ago, we had plenty of interest, and then all of a sudden, it just stopped.
I know we've mentioned being self-insured before, and it would hurt a lot of things like MS, but.
It's illegal for us.
It's illegal with you.
Right, because it's, yeah, illegal. I know you don't have it in front of you. I know, I hate to always say that, but. On a different, I hate to put you on the spot, Frank, because I know you know this, you don't have the paper in front of you, but how, I'd like to know how many buildings we insure, because so many of our buildings are vacant. So I just think we need to really consider selling the buildings we are not using because we are paying.
We're trying.
I know, but I'm just saying, my question is, are we paying the same amount for the empty buildings as we do for the buildings that we're using? Yes.
I mean, vacant buildings will cost you more.
Vacant buildings will cost us more?
But not on workers' comp.
No, I'm talking about property. Property coverage, we pay more insurance for vacant building?
Well, because the building that's occupied is being maintained, there's people there to make sure that the air conditioners aren't getting stolen, that there's not rocks being thrown through windows. And so, yes, vacant, vacant buildings typically.
Did y'all know that?
Yeah. And, and they're in larger cities, larger cities.
We don't have more than, how many?
In larger cities, there's actually what they call a vacancy tax if it's privately owned. But we, ours is county-owned. So we've been, we've had them on the market, I think they're, I'm paying.
We own, we have vacant three at most.
Pam, how many, do you know how many vacant buildings we have?
The only one that I know of is escape park. We're about to put people in and the other properties are vacant or just.
Just property, just land.
No buildings. Okay.
That's what my mom was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, the properties.
The land, land is.
Okay.
Not insured.
The land is not insured, is it?
Well, it's just for liability purposes.
And then we'll have one more, which we'll probably utilize, but the, when the Appleville Police Department is finished, then that building belongs to the county, the old one.
Well, we also have Maple Gray, I'm just thinking of that too, there's three or four buildings there, but anyway.
When we finish, Ms. Pennefield has finished the damage assessment to the point that we know of at this point. Those claims have been turned in. There may be some pop buildings that were required in the past, that FEMA required us to carry in the past, that y'all may not be replacing, we're repairing, we're going to have to look at the entire schedule and see if there's anything that we want to drop off from that standpoint. But a lot of these buildings you see on the schedule were, we have to cover due to FEMA after Katrina. That's one of their obligations.
But it's my understanding FEMA is very reluctant to cover anything now. I mean, I hope we'll hear from Rupert soon about that, that they're they're covered, especially homes and those sort of things. I don't know if it's county property, but it's, it's homes and damages that were caused by this, this recent storm.
I think that the president has declared the, is it section D?
He had none of that.
He did the one, we've gotten the one declaration. I don't know if he's done the section D that will provide for the 7525, but I think that we'll hit that threshold.
Can I ask a question on the liability? Brit is, we have not had claims that's got to be almost naked with one of the sheriff's department.
Great.
Sure. I've had any defined allegations, any implications, so it's a favorable case.
We are having, we are having basically a flat renewal.
Okay.
What they're doing is they're cutting our limits on law enforcement and on public officials. Looks like down from five to three billion.
Okay.
We're pushing back on that based on our history, but the fact of the matter is, is Brit, I mean, Harrison County is the only county that they govern in the state of Mississippi. They're normally writing very large counties that have had tremendous amount of public official claims and law enforcement liability claims over the past year. So we're dealing with this market. We may have to move to travelers. And, and, but if we're going to move to travelers, I want it to be under the situation where they're giving us the same limits that Brit has provided us in the past.
Also, we'll make sure that the county has control of the defense in this case.
That travelers has agreed to the defense, they have not agreed to the third-party administrator, which is another big deal. Because we save a tremendous amount of money on a third-party administrator, they want to send a third-party administrator down from Jackson, and I would prefer not.
No.
No.
And so that's, we're pushing back on that.
I want that.
Yep.
Because that's kind of like the Fox guarding the hen house.
Well, we have similar, a similar situation with workers' comp, because when we prove that the workers' comp is fraud, they will not prosecute. So, I mean, that's what we've had in the past, so.
I do believe that Jackson County and Hancock County would be interesting.
I would like to see that.
It seems like no matter what we do, if the sheriff's department have litigation and judgment since then, we do all this work, but it doesn't seem to, savings doesn't seem to pass on to us.
If y'all look at it to your historical, if you look at five-year historical, I mean, you are extremely profitable for any interest here.
Any, any other questions?
I will see y'all next meeting. Hopefully we'll have, I, I will have the casualty portion taken care of by next meeting. I do believe property is going to be a little bit more difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to my ass.
And do some yoga to keep your blood pressure low. No, this is not easy.
If the board does not mind, I'd love, or I'd like to ask the board to have Rupert come in.
Yes.
Things to discuss with him that are extremely important. I don't know that he's on the gym. But he's not, but he is outside. He always just kind of shows up to see if we're going to have bad news or not, so if we. Did she hear me?
He's here.
He's here. I would just, I don't know if she's, see if she comes back in, will, if the board has no objection.
Yes, please. Okay, we can get Rupert first.
Renee, would you get Rupert?
But you have this on you.
It's not.
No, that's what we need to talk to.
I mean, this is his.
Yes. And he is bringing with him, Tim, have, you have same mass agreement?
Yes, I reviewed it.
I need a copy of it.
Yes, I said it on the other side.
Rupert, thank you for coming. I see that you have some other things to discuss as well as Roger Wilder.
Wilder with the Gulf Coast Foundation.
And Tim, I think we'll all.
Tim, and I've got Jackie that we need to bring up some of the debris. Jackie Turner, our county engineer. Tim, and I've got Jackie that we need to, uh, bring up some of the debris. Jackie Turner, our county engineer, she's-
Is she here?
Can we talk about this first?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the, uh, the first is the, I'm sad to report, but we kinda knew this was going to be, uh, part of the problem. We've got volunteers. We've got limited volunteers. We've got more church groups. Uh, the AmeriCorps people are supposed to be coming in. Uh, I still haven't gotten a word out of the state. They've been requested, they have accepted the mission. Not what we wanted, but because we're not a federal declarate, or de- declared area yet by the governor to the president, and the president has approved it. Uh, we are, the volunteer groups are working. Uh, the supplies have run out, to say the, to say the least, uh, because of the federal declaration. We ordered tarp's, we got tarp's, the, the lack thereof, yes, ma'am. Uh, the damage, the damage is excessive, uh, in the eyes of what FEMA will probably tell us, and they will bring the, uh, PDAs, the, uh, the FEMA side to validate what we have validated over the last seven, eight, nine days, and still continue to do. Uh, the major and destroyed homes are, the, realistically, I don't see the threshold, and it's gonna be an argument that we're gonna be having with FEMA over the next couple of days, once they get into town. But that's across Hancock, Harrison, Jackson, Stone, George, and Granite County. Uh, so we were anticipating having to argue with them. With that being said, trying to get the aid to our residents and our citizens, uh, as some of the other counties have had to do this year under the tornadoes, and we're all fighting the same battles, is, uh, the lack of volunteers, the lack of getting things out of FEMA, and, and under, we understand there's a lot more activity that has happened. Uh, we have talked about this over the last few years with, with the Knight Foundation, with the Gulf Coast Foundation, with Roger, which is our long-term recovery. We're coming out of recovery into the long-term side, that there is a small grant, and as I said, it's a small grant, I'll get Roger up here. Uh, it is managed through the state, but we can apply for that, let the foundation, uh, handle it for us. We get it, it's a pass-through. We monitor at the requirements of the state, which we're very good about doing. It's all the federal grants that we get.
How much is it?
Two hundred thousand, I believe, and let me call Roger up here.
Now, I wanna ask you, what's, is there a match on it?
No, ma'am. The, the, the match is those are the in-kind dollars.
What would it be used for?
Uh, well, that's what Roger and I have been discussing. It's probably going to be buying supplies. Uh, and then we get the volunteer groups to help the residents that, you know, the tarp or, I can't see shingles.
My deal is, we don't have any volunteers. Let's call it what it is. At this point, we've got none. We've got too many people calling, they need tarp's put on their roof, they need help hooking their electrical box back to their house. I mean, I'm getting it from all of them.
No, I, I understand.
So my point, or I guess question is mostly for Tim, can the county legally pay for volunteers? Or can this two hundred thousand be used for that? I don't think supplies is a issue.
Yeah.
I know, but my point is, these people got it in return, but they just, um, for lack of a better guess, I'm assuming that the volunteers are worn out, and between the COVID and the rest of the disasters, they're just not-
And, and yes, Tim, I think Roger can answer that because he has talked to some of the other foundations. So I'm gonna let him come up.
The other question I have is, uh, exactly when does the governor expect?
That's where we are now.
When does the governor expect to hear from the president?
Well, we're hoping that the governor will do the, do his request today or tomorrow. Realistically, that's what I'm expecting.
He's not asked yet?
He has not asked yet, ma'am. No, ma'am.
That's my point. So, we may be sitting here a long time, so I go back to paying the volunteers, because if the governor hasn't even asked for this declaration, the fact that we're thinking FEMA's gonna be our night and shining armor, armor is not gonna happen.
And, and like I said, Roger has talked to the other foundations that have dealt with the hurt, with the tornadoes this year, and that has been a predominant question.
This is specifically, uh, dedicated to helping people whose homes were damaged, et cetera, right? I presume that before you give them any money, are you checking on the insurance and making sure that it, uh-
If they're not giving them money, this is to buy supplies to give to them.
This, this-
Something wrong with it, but, and I-
I think Roger's gonna have a better-
That when you give it to, this is for homes, right?
It's materials to repair their homes.
That's right. So therefore you're looking at insurance before you give these people.
We wouldn't.
Make sure that insurance pays for it before you give them.
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
It's, it's unmet needs.
Unmet needs.
Unmet needs. Here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down, Roger.
But Roger, here's my point. The biggest unmet need I see is not the lack of supplies, it's the lack of the labor to help with these supplies. I mean, I've been calling my insurance company for a week and a half now, and hadn't seen a sale, and I can't get anybody to go to talk on break, and I can't do it. So I'd pay somebody to come, but if I had some, where to go, you know? So, the guy's supposed to be coming tomorrow, we'll see.
I'll, I'll just give you a brief thing on this. This, this, it, this grant is from FEMA to you, but it has to be used through a long-term recovery process.
Well, the idea is if they have supplies, if you don't have the labor to help distribute that.
I, I look at it as a two-pronged approach. You gotta have labor, and you gotta have materials.
Right.
So even if we don't have the labor, at least we got the materials. And, uh, the, the way this has been working in the rest of the state, primarily for tornado disasters, is that, that, that the other community foundations that received this grant have used it. It can only be used for the materials. They've got a system worked out with FEMA that makes it relatively easy for us to report directly to them and to you as to what we're spending it for. And then, all we gotta, then, I was gonna say, all we gotta do at that point is find labor. Uh, no small task.
But you don't pay for the labor, I presume?
We don't pay out of this grant for the labor.
But you got other monies to pay for the labor?
Well, the community foundation has squirreled away some money, uh, from prior disasters, and we have a little bit of money that we can get the process started with. The, 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 the other counties where they're doing the same thing is, they have told me, quite frankly, they're having to raise it from their local community, from the people in their town, because, uh, we've got, we've, we've got disaster fatigue in this country, and people are not coming in the way they did after Katrina. We all remember when money and people, we had over a million people come in here after Katrina.
Never recovered had it not been for the, for the nonprofits and the religious groups.
And, and the community foundation gave away, I say gave back to the community, between fifty and sixty million dollars in money that came to us. Well, we're not gonna have that, so it's gonna have to be a, a process of, of doing the best we can do. This is a start. It is not the answer, but it is part of the answer. The good thing about this is it doesn't require a FEMA disaster, uh, disaster declaration, as I understand it. It is not just one-time money. It used to be, you could only get, at that time, it was two hundred and fifty thousand a, a fiscal year. Now, uh, FEMA told me, Carlos Martinez told me, that the good thing about this is if we run out of the money and we still got needs, we can theoretically get some more, so.
Now, can you make this donor restrictive, like I know you've done with most of the big donors in your group, CNOs, banks, and power companies? Can you also make this donor restrictive that it can only be used for Harrison County residents?
It, it can only be used for Harrison County residents, yes.
I didn't see it in the MOU.
It, I think it, I think it is. It is, it is only given to a county. That's their form, not mine. But we will use it for Harrison County.
Harrison County, Mississippi.
As a, as a Harrison County resident.
That's what I would make sure.
Well, we were talking about labor, for example, if, if I'm an absentee for some of this money, and I got certain damage to my house, can I, can you give me the money for materials? And I pay for the labor? Or you buy the materials, you give me the materials, and I pay for the labor to have it done?
We, we have to, we will have to buy the material.
Right.
And we will set up with the building supply companies, hopefully. We will set up so that we can send a designated person down there, and they can pick up, you know, twenty-two-by-fours and some, and some redecking and some tarp paper and all of that.
But the issue with what David just spoke about, the labor to, to, to do whatever needs to be done with those twenty-two-by-four. If I were a homeowner, can I get the money or get a pool of materials and pay my, pay the labor myself? Pay the labor of the property myself?
Yeah, we can do that, as I understand it.
So then, I won't, I would only, my cost then would only be pay the labor and not for the material.
Yes.
But as a benefit, then whether you have the labor, you, you don't have-
Whether I buy the labor or whether you buy the labor.
Yes. It's fine in the labor.
I mean, you may, you may have mentioned earlier, what's the turnaround time? The reason why I say is I, I got a call Friday afternoon, four o'clock, from one of our senior resource centers saying that this lady doesn't have power with, out of cans and, and talons, and I senior resource fought about every day in the course of the week. So I knew you liked it Friday afternoon, and of course, I take this, took it, and later ready.
Yeah, thank you.
But, you know, a tree from next door, that fall onto her power, come next door, so she's still got power. Of course, I take another cookie, and she's, okay, I'm gonna pay you back. But this is ripped, this ripped apart.
And it took the box off the side of the house.
So what's the turnaround time as far as trying to get someone like that?
There, there is no way that, certainly that we can, we can guarantee that, or that we can even provide it. We have set up a volunteer resource center.
I gave you that.
We have, we have set that up, and what that is intended to do is coordinate with the volunteer labor that has come in. What we're trying to do is we're trying to address the most needy first. So, you know, elderly who, um, life support, that sort of thing, we will try to get them out there. But to be honest with you, again, the organizations that have been coming in in the past are not coming in with, uh, with volume that's large enough to, 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 to cover anywhere close to the need. Yeah, of course. So, let me also distinguish one of those, we're, as you well know, we're in the recovery phase right now, and, or we're in the response phase now, which is what the volunteer resource center is trying to address. At some point, probably pretty quickly, we're gonna go into this long-term recovery. Hopefully where people have the tarp's on their roofs and the power's back and, you know, things are patched up. And then when we go into the long-term recovery, we will be trying to address the permanent needs. This is really addressed at permanent needs, but the fact of the matter is, we're gonna use them on the short term as well. And, and it's permissible for us to do that.
Let me ask you one other question. Always concerning when monies come through us, pass to, to other, to other organizations, CPG and all that sort of thing. Ultimately, we're the liable party. For example, who's gonna audit this money? And if there's some issues with the audit, and money is spent where it shouldn't have been spent, come back to this board and we have to return it. So, what kind of guarantees are, who's gonna be auditing and?
I can, I can, I, I assume that it will be audited by FEMA, probably the state auditor. Uh, I don't know whether there's an OIG, uh, but we have, the community foundation, uh, has experience with this sort of thing. We have, we have substantial assets that, um, we can, we can make available if, if you, uh, if anything happens. I really, the, the, the way this thing is designed, we report monthly to FEMA. I can provide you that same information.
It's a reimbursement type, it's a reimbursement.
Well, what they do is they give you fifty thousand, and then as you spend the, a- after you, after you spend the fifty thousand, they give you another fifty thousand. So, uh, talking to my counterparts at the other foundations that have received the grants, they, they say it's working very smoothly.
Why would the foundation, are y'all not eligible to get grants directly from FEMA?
Uh, we're not eligible to get this grant directly from FEMA. The, the rest of it, I, I don't know about maybe, so I don't know. This, this is probably the closest that we'll get, uh, to getting any upfront monies, uh, as we've seen. And it, it came off of the Katrina housing, which they kinda learned, uh, but we're not by any means toward the big Katrina housing. So they give, uh, those emergency funds, they get put into that rainy day fund, so that there could be some type of assistance to come by.
I would imagine they're using us and, and, and civil, I call it civil defense, emergency matters, uh, uh, management to, um, so that we know that it's a valid storm event, and that we have the best, um, evaluation of that, that'd be mine.
Well, and, and you have the deci- you, you have the choices to whether you engage us to do this or not. I don't get anything out of it. This just costs me. So if you want somebody else to do it, I'd, I'd be happy to let you have it.
No.
No.
But, but, you know.
I'm prepared to make the motion.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
I don't believe this is being limited to just supplies and materials. Instead of, granted, shall extend all funds of this agreement to a long-term recovery committee and use one or several funds in this grant, assist homeowners of affordable alternative housing options and home repair. And under eligible costs, instead of granting shell, applying FEMA function to, for only eligible costs, including materials, supplies needed for disaster-related restoration or repair. The purchase of a mobile or larger home and their replacement by going, destroy and a disaster is also eligible under this agreement. Doesn't appear to be just for supply of the materials, although that's somewhat contradictory in that one.
And, and, and we had- I'll tell you, Tim, I, this is, this, this is what FEMA told me. Uh, and that's what I've heard from all of those others. You know, if I could use it for something else that was needed, I'd be happy to.
That's why I'm concerned, Tim, if, if there's a problem with this, it turns back to the board and, uh, the taxpayers to pick up that cost that, that, that is not eligible. It's a step, and eligible, if I can use that word, and it come back and it's audit, it's gonna come back since we're the pastor. We're gonna be responsible for making up that deficit, even though, I, I, that's my concern.
Excuse me. There seems to be, excuse, could everybody just wait a second, please? Seems to be a problem with how many people we have in the room, and it's causing some disruption. So if we can-
Spread out.
If y'all can spread out, or, uh, Renee, can you see how many people can come in here safely, six feet apart? You have to be six feet apart, or otherwise wait outside. You be, just, you just be outside and we'll come get you if there's an issue.
Well, Rupert and Roger and Jackie can leave for a while. I mean, they won't be needed for the snacks.
Well, everybody's gonna leave, I mean, all these folks are gonna leave, not these, but the- But let's not have a disruption in the meeting while we're trying to listen to this gentleman and get this straight, okay?
Is, is the total amount of the, uh, grant two hundred thousand? Or is that, is that the total amount of the grant two hundred thousand?
That's what, what Roger has received out of the state. It's a, it is not a big ti- or a big grant. It's, you know, uh, just as that paragraph about the, the, uh, the rental home or the trailer, is that we-
is that we, we very quickly and, and just a few, this would be used simply to try to repair people's homes to where they can continue to be livable. Uh, but it's not a replacement.
If you're gonna replace a modular home or a trailer, you've done about two of them and the money's gone.
That's exactly it, yes, sir.
And, and our intention would be, our intention is that we would use this for materials to, to rebuild or repair a home using volunteer labor. That's not going for that.
And I'm in the agreement, you have that authority.
I do.
And may we have a motion then, uh, that after review of our attorney, pending the review and approval of our attorney, uh, that we accept this agreement and move forward?
I don't make that motion, Tim, I'm prepared to approve.
I've read it, there's some contradictions, but we can work those out.
I'll make the motion.
And let's make sure that we, please, we've worked with, no offense to FEMA or M E M A, but we have worked with them before. And it hasn't always worked out exactly like they, we thought it would or they thought it would. So that being said, if, pending the agreements that you work out with those two entities, uh, we have a motion and we have a second. If there's any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All eyes, all eyes for the board process to execute the grant and the agreement, M O U.
Pending.
Subject to legal review and subject to the appropriate language. I'll do that pretty quickly.
Thank you. Oh, did you get that?
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger, thank you so much, we appreciate it very much.
I'll send them red light.
Thank you.
On that one, you may extend it. Another day, they're gonna change our little bit.
Roger, Rupert, you have more?
Yes, ma'am, I do have more. Uh, the burn van, talking with Pat this morning, uh, authorizing that we could release that burn van. He does not see it being, uh, an imminent threat right now. Uh. And, uh, that, uh, this will actually kind of free them up because people are burning leaves. They're small piles, but we're not seeing the big burn like we were seeing, so, uh, and the debris is being picked up, starting to be picked up.
That has authority to do that, that, he has authority.
Yes, sir. But I just wanted to bring that to y'all and we'll get Jeff to push that back out. Pat's Christian did lift theirs today also. I, I cannot speak on the other cities, but, uh, I'm sure that they'll probably follow the trend also. The, the thread is not that great right now, uh, so that's been a good thing. We do, uh, I wanted to get Jackie up here to do the debris update. One thing that we did have, which you will find a little humor in, uh, the, uh, Department of Environmental Quality also managed into the historical side of things. So they had to verify that our sites that we're using for chipping is not historical significant. So that has kept one of the sites offline. We're hoping to get that update today so that both the east and the west sites will be, uh, doing the chipping side.
But when we chip it, we hauling it off?
I, I understand, but they.
Appropriate dump, what, what damage does it?
Didn't want to make sure there are any birds, bums, critters.
Birds or bugs, they couldn't protect them.
Are we doing?
No, sir, but, but you know, this is all changed after.
I got you.
Two thousand five and especially two thousand ten when we did, uh, B T. So Jackie's got a couple of updates that I wanna, and I can concur with her on trying to, uh, make this a little bit more easy. Now, we did have Army Corps of Engineers invalidating what we have already kind of validated. Uh, that is federal government, but we have kind of worked through those issues. Uh, voiced our opinion and now we think that they can live with what we have said, but you know, it's still picking up the debris. So I'm gonna call on Jackie.
What location is that, Jackie? Is it over by the ball field?
The one that's not approved yet, yes. The one that is approved is one that we actually need to take action on. Um, is a quick summary, we've been hauling since Friday. We have twenty-three trucks out right now hauling, um, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, they were able to pick up a little over seventeen thousand cubic yards and they've already chipped about ten thousand yards of that, so that's all at the Fair Grounds site. They are continuing to haul and chip today and they should be starting to take the chips to the landfill. They are restricting the amount of total volume at any site so that we don't have, um, big fire hazards from all the material in any one site. Um, just as a review, um, we started immediately trying to activate the two sites that are in our, our emergency plan. One of them, by the time you get setbacks from residences, building or, um, property lines and everything else, was really not larger to manage this site. And so what we've done is moved over to the property south of the Fair Grounds. And since that is not in our, um, approved emergency plan, tell me if I'm right or wrong about this. My understanding is I need for you to adjudicate the use of that site as an added debris reduction site in our plan.
Exactly where that is, talking about south, south.
The Levin's property, there's a maintenance shed in a, in a well out there.
The property where the sheriff is over there south.
No, it's not, it's not across the road.
No, this is adjacent to the Fair Grounds on the south side, the Levin's property, there's a maintenance shed and a well there and they've, they visibly looked at it. Everybody's good with it, historical has decided it's a safe site, environmental has decided it's a safe site and they're okay with this using that.
There were no Native Americans there.
They didn't find any, yeah, they didn't find any relics of significance apparently. So if, that, I, I guess that's one action that I do need if y'all are in agreement to adjudicate.
I have a motion to, uh, move, so that you can be moved.
Sorry.
You hit that pretty. Yeah, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'll post a motion here.
And I do have, I have the paperwork and the, and the drawings I'll leave here before, um, leave. The other item that I would like to bring up is our contract does allow for the collection of vegetative debris and construction and demolition debris. And then it allows for the reduction of vegetative debris by chipping or grinding. Um, we're not sure that we need to use it yet, but, um, our contractor has offered a proposal to also reduce construction and demolition debris if a site is identified and if we decide it's fiscally valuable for us to do so. Um, they have offered a change order to also do construction and demolition reduction at the same price. And I have that here and I would like to do that subject to legal review of it. Um, but if y'all are in agreement, we would not use that item unless we determine it will save us money in the long run.
That material goes into the dump now, doesn't it?
Correct, but if they can reduce it, you know, if they can compact it to half the volume or something, we can pay a lot less than cubic yardage.
So our tipping fee will be less?
Our tipping fee is based on cubic yardage, so if we can compact it to half the size, then we would save there. But we would look at how much can you reduce it, what would it cost and what would we save to see if it's worth it?
Can you reduce it, that's what you're saying, can you reduce it enough to at least equal out?
We'll look at that and if we can't, we won't use it and we'll go straight to the dump. If we can do it and save money, then we would like to have it available.
What if we have, um, builders that are, would have usually used a dumpster or whatever, uh, look, just if, if we hadn't had a storm? Is that gonna affect that in any way?
We are going to be as careful as we can be to only collect storm-related damages required by M E M A. I think that we all know that occasionally somebody dumps a board somewhere that we just don't see, but we'll do everything we can to limit it to eligible debris.
So I'll enter a motion to, uh, approve Ms. Jackie's request.
The, the approval is based upon their evaluation, whether they exercise that portion of the contract or not.
What we would, what would we be, what we would be doing is approving a change order to Crowderville's contract to add the consolidation of C and D debris.
If maybe they do and if less expensive.
Well, we would add it to the contract, we wouldn't use it unless we determine it's eligible, right.
And do we need to base that on review by the?
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh, we have a motion, one second.
Sure.
Uh, all those in favor signify by, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'll post the motion here.
And then the only other thing I'll add to that is, like I said, they, they should be hauling out chipped wood as they're setting up all those monitoring stations today. So starting tomorrow, they'll be hauling that out. And I was getting messages from the D E Q guy late last night actually asking questions about the ballpark site. So hopefully they can get their historic and environmental approval there and we'll be able to start reducing vegetative debris on that side as well within a day or two. It will be full forward and any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Jack.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, you know.
May I?
Yes, sir.
One, one, just for your information, the community foundation will have set up a, uh, Harrison County Strong Fund. Uh, anybody who wants to donate to that and certainly do so, we will use a hundred percent of that to help in this recovery effort. I am not trying to discourage anybody from contributing to their, to their other favorite charities. And this, this is, this is a source for people in the county and out of the county. And all of that money will be used for this Harrison County Recovery Effort.
In and out of the county or in and out of?
Donors in and out of the county.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The money is gonna be used too.
Okay, that's a, well, hey, we'll take that money. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Roger, thanks for.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Rupert, you're finished?
I think that's it, we're just, uh, we are still watching Etta. Uh, but you know, we lifted it. So that, that would be our recommendation, so.
Rupert, how many, uh, storms have we had this year? I mean, are there storm threats?
Ms. Connie, I hate to tell you, I couldn't, I, I have not counted.
Eight is the thirtieth named one and I don't, they didn't all threaten us, obviously.
I.
Thirtieth?
Twenty-nine last week. So hopefully I won't have to ask you to get back together before the end of the week, but, uh, we are watching. So, uh, we're going back to do everything else that we need to be doing.
Thank you so much, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Rupert, and Jackie.
Jackie will be there. Okay, now under number four to recognize and, please forgive me if I swagger this, like, slower, swagger, swager, S W O G E. Renee, President of CASA Harrison County, please give us an update. Renee. You, oh, sorry, just come on in. And your, and your address, that it can be your work address. Just state your name.
Renee Swager, forty-seven Naples Drive, Gulfport.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, uh, my name is Renee Swager. I am the President of the Board of Directors of CASA and Stone Counties. Thank you for inviting me to address, uh, the Harrison County Board of Supervisors on behalf of CASA. And thank you for your continuing and generous support of our organization, which we sincerely appreciate. With me today, we have, um, our legal counsel, Billy Geis, as well as Maria Martinez. She's our, uh, Vice President of our Board of Directors, as well as our Board Counsel. We also have Jeanie Heron, our Executive Director, Ben Barlow, Board Member, Benoy Nishra, Board Member, and other advocates and supporters of CASA. On behalf of the entire Board of Directors, our staff members, our advocates and our volunteers, I must stress to you the seriousness of the situation that we find ourselves in today at no fault of our own. Because of the actions of the Harrison County Youth Court Judge, Michael Dickinson, today marks the fortieth day of CASA advocates not being able to ensure the health and well-being of our abused and neglected children that we were serving on October first. Forty days without an independent agency having eyes and ears on children who are victims of child abuse. Forty days. These children and their families are suffering, uh, they are being placed in harm's way. They are being punished by the Harrison County Youth Court, the very court that is supposed to protect them. From January first through September third of this year, our CASA advocates, all of who are unpaid, trained volunteers, advocated for one hundred and forty-nine children on seventy-six cases. They traveled over fourteen thousand miles and logged over two thousand volunteer hours. On October first of twenty twenty, Judge Dickinson relieved our advocates from all cases pending in his court, regardless of the complexity or severity of the case and without any warning. This abrupt retaliatory and unsupported action left eighty-four children completely vulnerable without their CASA. Obviously, we're in the midst of a pandemic. CASA organizations across the country are raising the alarm bells about the increase in child abuse. Um, as more families isolate at home or are under quarantine, lockdowns and stay-at-home orders have resulted in job losses, economic insecurity, increasing pressure and uncertainty for many families. And we know that stress at home increases the risk of domestic violence. We have reached out to Judge Dickinson multiple times to attempt to resolve this matter with no success. On October fifth, you expressed your support for CASA by issuing a public statement acknowledging that CASA is a very important part of the care of children within Harrison County. And you encouraged Judge Dickinson to reach out to us to resolve these issues, keeping in mind that what is most important is the children and the care and attention they receive while under the jurisdiction of the youth court in CASA. And apparently, your request fell on deaf ears. We are here today to plead for the help of the Harrison County Supervisors once more. We ask that you please discuss this issue amongst yourselves and with your legal counsel and determine whether there is anything that the Harrison County Board of Supervisors can do to end this misguided and unnecessary attack on CASA and the children that we advocate for. Our CASA advocates need to get back to work as quickly as possible.
Where CPS and all this, isn't that their job?
CPS is doing the same thing that they've been doing.
That's not answering my question. Are they, are they going out physically visiting these children? Or are they, because of the COVID, not doing that or what, or doing that?
I, I.
That's out of her area of expertise.
No, hang on, just a second.
It's not what she knows.
What, well, what do you know, is my question? Do you know, yeah, to your knowledge?
I do not know.
Okay.
All I know is that the children don't have the CASAs, you know, and, um, we, 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 we just, we want, we want the, the attacks to end. We want, we want to go back and, and serve the, the children that need us and they'll have to.
I'm not real familiar with it, but to try to answer the question, if I understand correctly, CASA is clearly an advocate for the child. CPS kind of works with the court as a, uh, and, and I'm not sure, I can't get it to you, but the CASA group are specifically advocates for the child. And some, and I don't know the relationship that CPS, of course CPS is supposed to be that also, but then the relationship that CPS and the court, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not an expert, but I think to try to answer your question, somebody else again might better be capable of answering that question. But I think to kind of get to your question, that's the difference. And I'm, I'm not an expert at it, I don't know, but I believe that would be, uh, somewhat of an answer to your question. Somebody else would know more about it.
Ms. Renee, at this time, could you move just to the side and have, put your mask back on, please? And then have this young lady who wants to speak about that come forward.
She might not be through with her.
I'm sorry.
But just to answer that question, since it was asked.
I just moved to the side.
I am a CASA, in the last case that I was on, I went to the house twice before CPS even went. And they made a recommendation without ever seeing the child, so.
Without even seeing the child?
Yes, sir.
That happens all the time, and the truth is.
That happens all the time. And the truth is, they did not, they used COVID as the reason to not visit children from February until very, very recently. So some cases, five months, children weren't even checked. They checked them by Zoom. An abused child should not be checked by a conference call.
And you have.
I'm Scott Allen, the Treasurer. I'm Scott Allen, I'm the Treasurer for the Board of Directors for CASA. I just want to say that we think that CPS does a fantastic job. They are working very hard, but like any government agency, they do not have the number of people. So what we've done by doing this is we've taken 200 hours of people who are business leaders, professionals who have trained themselves to do this exact job. So I don't care what organization you have. If you take 200-plus hours out in a month, it's going to hurt. So CPS is doing a whole lot of work. They do a great job. But they need us because they are overworked and we offer an extra 200 hours of volunteer work. New energy. These aren't, this isn't their job. This isn't their career. They're coming here because this is their passion, because they care. They've taken the training class. We put them through a long, extensive training class. And to just take those volunteer hours out of the system, we can't pretend that those kids are in the same situation they were without us.
Thank you.
I, I think the other thing to, to state is that, you know, we are an independent autonomous organization. We are unbiased. We are unpaid. Our, our intentions are purely that for the child. And, and it's as simple as that. But unfortunately, like, like I said, there are 84 children who are left without an independent voice, without their CASAs. And, and today is day 40 that these children do not have their voice. So I'm pleading with you all to please help, to do whatever you can in your power to help get the CASAs back on cases.
Uh, I think we'd have to refer to our attorney to ask.
Well, I think we should, we ought to, the judge is on the agenda. So maybe we should talk to him as well and ask our attorney, what, if anything, we can do.
It's, it's the judicial, is a, is a separation. We are separated from judicial. Are you doing my name? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let's allow this gentleman to speak here and your, or your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Bill Alexander. I've been with CASA for eight years. Address is 47 Maple Drive. And we have seen both the actions and inactions of CPS. Some do not like CASA, others rely on us. We've had CPS workers to call us and ask us to go with them to a particular housing project that was very dangerous to go into. And we have had tremendous support by some of the CPS workers. They actually called us and asked us to help. In the eight years, my wife and I have been able to see almost everything you can imagine. Walmart bag babies, drugies, opioid users. Some have not made it, but low, so many of them have. And when you see these children, you will then appreciate what CASA is. Our opinion is that the judge needs a couple set of eyes. The CPS has so many cases. And we have been to their office at times to fill out paperwork on one of our cases that they spent two or three hours just doing the paperwork while we sit there and took care of the little boy. One of our most known cases is a young man. We've had since the age of eight. He's now 16. We've been to every birthday party. We've been to every Christmas and a lot of Thanksgivings. When the last time we were able to see him was on his birthday on June the 15th in Natchez. This is his third time in Natchez. He has no family members. He does accept for a sister who's tried on her own to work her way through college. There's no way that she could take him, but it is a support for him and his grandmother. CPS has been working real diligently on trying to get him some work. We've had some CPS workers prior that just shoved him around. This latest one actually let us know that they apologized, but they had to tell him that their orders were he could not talk to us.
And that's based on what the judge has.
That's based upon the judge. They, they have orders from the court not to help any communications with CASA.
How many foster homes was this child in, for instance, since he's been in the system?
He has been in over 30 locations. We've driven, and I'm not bragging or anything, but the thing about it is, is you've got to go where they're at. My wife and I sort of make it as a nice little trip to go to Arkansas. We took him, got court order, was able to take him to see his sister graduate with honors from the HASCAP.
I'd like to point out, you and your wife were named of 90,000 CASAs in the entire United States. You and Ellen were named CASAs of the Year because of your expert training by Jeannie Heron and CASA of Harrison County. I just want everyone to understand that and congratulations and thank you.
Well, thank you. I thank you very much for that, but there are many other CASAs out here that do the same work we do. We're not exceptional, other than the fact that somebody put in a recommendation and national flag. There are so many of us that are out there. But we have been to every location until this has happened with him. We, he, he, he'd been at, at, uh, uh, hospitals in, uh, Memphis and several homes. He's been to Mill Creek and McGee and Pontotalk. We were there when his mother, quote, committed suicide. And we were asked by CPS to go back to Pontotalk the next day after we had traveled up there, to be there when he was informed of his mother's death. CPS did not take him to the funeral because it happened on a holiday and everybody was off for the holiday. He still has problems with that. His situation is, is he wished he was with his mother. In our training, that can mean two things. That he wants to commit suicide so he can be with her, or he just misses her. We try to work that he just misses her. And the thing about it is, is people say, well, he is doing this because of you. You don't see him all the time. We see him much more than anyone else does other than the facilities. And the only facilities that we have confidence in was the facilities at Quitfield Oak Circle. They did a wonderful job there, but according to the law, they can only keep him so long. Once he left there, he went downhill. He has learned to survive. And the thing about it is, this is just one example of what's happened. He was very, very, very upset when he was told that he could not talk, talk to us, call us anymore by orders of the CPS.
No, orders of the judge.
Oh, excuse me.
This is getting kind of.
Yeah, thank you, Billy.
So the point is because of the judge's orders.
You're correct. I apologize. You're, you are correct. By this order. And, and like I say, we've had wonderful relationships with quite a few CPS workers. And we don't, we don't want to badmouth them or anything. Our deal is, we've got to get out. So many of these kids are not going to have a Christmas because we got trailers, loads of gifts donated every year. And here it is, going to be coming up Christmas time. And we are the only ones that can get Christmas gifts to them. And I'm not saying all of them, but quite a few of them. So I need to stop. I apologize.
One more.
Okay, thank you.
Billy Geis, the, oh, you want to say something, ma'am?
Billy, please.
Please, come up here, give your name back.
My name is Janet Moore. I've been with CASA for about three years. When I retired, so when we retired, I decided to, to do some volunteer work. And after looking at the nonprofits, I decided from CASA, I've been with them for three years. So I've been utilized because of my, my profession, a speech-language pathologist for children on the autism spectrum. And I remember one in particular that was in a foster home. And I was able to, after seeing the child, work with the foster parents to make the climate a little bit better, climate a better understanding. I was also raised in El Salvador, so my other language is Spanish. And I've been used by CASA to work with Hispanic population. And one thing is to learn the language. The other is to learn to know the culture so that you're able to communicate and transmit back and forth information. CPS has been wonderful. I have worked really well with CPS, but they don't have the manpower, the ability. In my case, I have actually been translator on many occasions that CPS get their job done. So I really want to just kind of, on the tails of everybody else, impress on you the urgency. There's one child who's a teenager who keeps on sending me from out of the country, doesn't know English, turns up, keeps on sending me photographs of her. And I am very limited. I have to answer, even though we're not supposed to. I answer and I at least say, bravo, good for you. So I just want to impress upon you the need, that this has, the urgency of it. It has to be fixed. Thanks.
And, and Miss, you say for us, or you wanted to say something?
I was just going to ask you, Mr. Geis, who's Jeannie Heron and CASA's attorney. Would you mind coming up and giving us the legal side of this, what you've done so far and where we stand?
Thank you. I'm Billy Geis, Law Firm Rushing Geis, formerly of Blutze, now at the Katrina Ocean Springs. We have the privilege of representing CASA. My representation began when Judge Dickinson entered an order of his own volition, sucesfante, wherein he basically told CASA to fire their administrator. And as long as she was there, she would not, they would not participate. This order was most curious because it was assigned a number of the youth court, although it had nothing to do with the pending case, without notice. And if there's one thing that's important, and the whole legal process is notice. Nothing happens in the law without notice, or nothing should happen. So the administrator, executive director of CASA was not told what this was about. It was just entered. CASA was not told what was about. It was just entered. They weren't given an opportunity to come into the court and say, we deny that. And, and the fact of the matter is, the basis of the order, as it becomes fleshed out, was just incorrect and made some assumptions that were factually wrong. Thereupon, we looked at the order and said, well, what should we do? And we filed three things. One was a ask, request for a rehearing, that is, let us come and talk this over and try to do it again. Secondly, a stay and say, let us call a timeout and not do anything now. Put everything back the way they were until this gets resolved. And thirdly, a, a request that he recuse himself through a motion that has a particular procedure. And that is basically saying, why don't we have a neutral judge come in and hear this and make a decision on the facts that exist and what the law should be? We were met with silence. Now, our pleadings that we attempted to file originally, we filed and then we got back from the youth court with X's across them and were told they couldn't be filed. We, the youth court clerk's office is under the circuit court in Harrison County. So we contacted the circuit clerk and said, how can this happen? I've been practicing 48 years. I never had this happen. And so they, they then said, well, it shouldn't. And these are filed. And I think they asked, actually asked him for an opinion. Rightly, him being the fine lawyer he is, it's filed. You've got to take them. And so we, we got that turned around. We believe that had been instigated by the judge and the people under his control and not by anyone with the clerk's office. Later, you know, we, we tried to get hearing dates and could not get hearing dates. Let us come, come in and sort this out in the manner and procedure we can. We were then told from time to time that this was not a case because it didn't relate to a child. Well, they had it, had their number on it and it got started somehow in that court. And if it wasn't a case, we shouldn't, shouldn't have been there, but that, that's where we were. Finally, during this time, we attempted some negotiations and, and tried to find some resolution. The recusal procedure has a short fuse. Well, short in lawyer's terms, long in children's terms. And in, in 30 days, if you don't hear anything, you then go to the Mississippi Supreme Court with a motion to disqualify. And so that's where that stands. We have now filed a motion to disqualify. Part of that procedure is that we have to have a certified copy of the file. Had trouble getting that and it was not forthcoming. We went back to the clerk and the clerk was.
Why did you have trouble getting that when that's public record and you have a right to that?
Well, his office wouldn't certify. The, we could not get it from the youth court and that's where we were required to make the request. So we got the clerk who then got the documents, had it certified. And now we're before the Supreme Court on the motion to disqualify.
Mr. Geis?
Yes, sir.
The motion to disqualify, are you asking for it to be moved to an appropriate court? Either Chatham, Circuit, some appropriate court, or are you simply asking?
Really, uh.
Another youth court judge?
This is another youth court judge, or the Supreme Court can appoint any substitute judge that would be, be appropriate. The youth court has somewhat of an independent line of its jurisdiction. It, it's really part of the county court, but it isn't part of the county court. They have separate statutes and you have different lines of appeal. I know we're all, Tim and I, when we were younger, we, the, all the county court judges used to be the youth court judges and they each had their own term in the, in, in the middle. And it was felt, and Margaret Alfonso is a great example. It was felt that there was some degree of expertise that was needed in the youth court that was apart from the normal county court. And frankly, from time to time, I've, I've, I've had occasion to represent people who had hard, hard ways to make a living. Oncologists, you deal with people that die all the time. Well, in the youth court, you're dealing with tragedy every day. And it does wear them out. And, and you've got to have the demeanor and sensitivity to continue to fight the battle every day because it is a battle. It's a battle with, I don't want to preach it here, it's a battle with the forces of evil that are attacking these children. I've dealt with abused people. I've dealt with abused children. I am not a, a trained CASA advocate as these people, but it's hard. And it's really hard. I think, I think that's one reason Barbara became chancellor, because you can only do so much. You can only do so much.
So right now, if you don't mind me asking, he called National CASA to get our charter taken away.
He attempted to interfere there, yes.
He's not, um, answering. His thirty days were up, so it's a total silent treatment. So he's basically just trying to starve you out, right? That y'all are gonna lose your charter, our children will lose their advocates.
Exactly.
Starve you out. What's gonna happen now?
Well, if we can't find some way of, of resolving this, you're right, time is on the court's side. There are, I'm restricted about some of the things I can say and can't say. Okay. So I will not go into anything else. Uh, but we, we have to find a way to get the court to hear it. Uh, I, I, I was joking a moment ago, but I'm not, is time in, in the law is, is a less rapid procedure than time to people who are extremists. And so we're, uh, we may go back to the Supreme Court and apply for an emergency hearing if they would be so kind to grant, grant us one.
But in the meantime, how long would that take and how many children will be affected?
We, we, yes, it's, the last procedure involving this judge and, and a similar disqualification is over eight months. We don't have that time. We just don't have, have that time. And, and that gets to, to a point, Supervisor Rocco brought up. Board of Supervisors, you, you, of course, you have a wonderful lawyer and he, he will guide you well. But it is not just a legislative body. It is also at times a judicial body. And at times, you're the administrative bond of, of this county. So this, this one has a focus in combined things. And I think under the administrative thing, there are things that could be done to bring pressure upon the court to see the light.
I think that would have to be discussed in-
Exactly such.
Executive session. And we'll go under the advice of our attorney.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. That, that should be-
Even though we are, we do have the three arms of judicial, legislative, and administrative, we have our limitations on that as well.
And, and I've, I've had the pleasure of dealing very often with a, another board of supervisors and, and attending often executive sessions. And, and I understand that, and I encourage you to properly discuss it and, and not go beyond where we need to be. Unless you have any more questions, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for all coming.
Thank you for coming. Uh, you, you all may be dismissed, if you just let-
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Okay, under consent agenda, is the, uh, agenda item number six, debate had been placed under the consent agenda, saying appearing to be reaching non-controversial matters, which all supervisors are likely to-
Motion to agree.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carried. Under Chancy Clark is order approving legal socket for Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two, section nineteen thirteen twenty-seven, motion.
Motion.
What number are you on?
Oh, among six. Six through eight outside. I just go through those since we didn't agree. Thank you. Number nine, under county administrator's order approving knowledge reimbursement on, uh, in county travel for employees as listed in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. If they receive public say aye, I'll pose a motion carrying under election commission's order, approving request for Becky Payne, Harrison County Election Commissioners, District Two, of hazard pay due to the COVID-nineteen in the amount of fifty dollars each for the additional poll workers and legislation, uh, regi- uh, resolution board members uh, working in the awful runoff election on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, to be paid from the election commission. Should I recuse myself?
Motion.
Sure.
Should I recuse myself?
Discussion. Uh,
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Oh, Ms. Payne, do you have any idea when y'all might be finished counting the ballots for the first race?
Well, I can't ask the digits. I'm still doing so.
How far along are-
And the resolution board is meeting today. Hopefully, they'll finish up with the, the bulk of them, and then they have at least two more days that they have to come back for.
So at least two more. People were asking. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
That it?
Number eleven, order approving assistance from the road department with the following and any other responsibilities as needed. Once again, it's delivering to the precincts election equipment on Monday, November twenty. Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Number twelve, order taking off the table agenda item number eleven, approve it for second. Meeting approving annual salary increase established by section twenty-one one sixty-seven in the amount of two thousand dollars for Deputy Caitlin Gonzalez, Deputy Clerk, for obtaining certification from the advisory board of the Mississippi Tax Collector Education Certification Program. Do we have a motion?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Number thirteen, order approving annual salary increase as established by section twenty-seven one sixty-seven in the amount of two thousand dollars for Caitlin Gonzalez for atten- attaining certification from the advisory board of the Mississippi Tax Collector's Education and Certification Program. Do we have a motion?
opposed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Holloman, that was, you, I think we have to, you know, research this, research-
Research. There are two issues with this. One is the statute says that we're supposed to have a minimum of three. So if they have the minimum of three, then the fourth would not be mandatory. Uh, so that's one I should have more consider. I don't know how many they have that fit this category. Second issue is, if there's three, then I think it is mandatory, but sadly, if it does not, the annual increase does not occur until the next fiscal year after they complete the certification. I don't know when they complete the certification. I can't see it.
I'm sorry, did what?
She was correcting me. Change my revenue to-
Then when was this take effect? That's the next question.
It's been, another board approved her to attend it last year, uh, this time last year, oh, better last year. So it's been a year since, so she-
And your research, is there any prohibition for this board granting this if she did, uh, complete the classes?
Yeah.
Is there any prohibition for the board to, uh, not give it to her? Even what I'm trying to say, if it's not mandatory and she did complete, complete the classes, can we give, we can give her the pay grade?
Yes, I think you can give it to her, yes. There's a minimum of three, so I think the board has discretion in that regard. So that's the first issue. That's one. There, there's two classifications, one and two. One is mandatory and two is discretionary.
Discretionary.
But this person got the two. So, and it says, it does say, uh, annual beginning the next fiscal year after completion.
So what you're saying is this revenue two, this is discretionary on part of the board, my motion still stands.
I'm sorry, did what?
I, I won't change my motion if it's discretionary. If she went through the trainings, I can't think of anything else to justify pay raise than somebody getting additional education in reference to their job performance.
I agree.
I, I agree as well. I just wanted to be sure that, um, the start date, so the next fiscal year. So would you pass this based on Pam's research, I guess, for when it would actually go into effect? Because we're already in our fiscal year. So it would be a year from now?
If she completed it last year, so she, so it's been a year. So she, she entitled to it this year if she's okay to pass it last year.
Does, does this require a budget amendment?
Um, they didn't request one, but so I don't know what to do.
Must be picking it up out of their budget.
Okay, yeah.
CR two is entitled to it if they, if they completed their, then take effect till the next fiscal year.
So she completed it last year, then it would be effective this year.
Well, according to the letter from Mississippi State that certifying the completion, that letter is dated September twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
So that she completed the act. I don't have backup.
I can't see the backups, so I don't-
Is that for, and it's for revenue two?
So, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Pam, you might want to make sure when it actually starts.
I don't have the critical data. I didn't have the data.
Okay, Ms. Conley. Item fourteen, order approving payment claims as listed. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed, motion carried. Item fifteen, order approving the final plan for Landon Green subdivision, phase three, as recommended by Jackie Turner, Harrison County Engineer and authorizing Board President, Dixie Keaton, same as follows. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, double discussion. Is that, which district is that in? Normally, you'll say in the supervisor's board.
Two.
Two, something else. Oh, did I miss?
It's in the, um, yeah.
Oh, I got it.
Item fifteen is a year history.
We left sign.
Landon Green subdivision.
The Landon Green phase-
Oh, yeah, but Jackie can talk about that, yeah.
Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Item sixteen is only an administrator. I'll recognize Mr. Patrick Bach.
This is ma'am. Sixteen and seventeen are stated cases before the planning commission. We ask to concur with recommendations.
Okay, do we have a motion to concur with the planning commission's recommendation for item sixteen and seventeen? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Patrick. Number eighteen, order concurring with county administrator on personnel changes as listed and on file with the payroll clerk and personnel department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen, order concurring with the road manager on appointment as listed and as on file with the payroll clerk and personnel department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Item twenty, order spreading on the minutes, the personnel changes of the sheriff's department as listed and on file with the payroll clerk and personnel department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one, order authorizing the purchase clerk to submit exemption request from reverse auction to P P R B to allow sealed or electronic bids submitted for the following annual term bid groups. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, order spreading upon the minutes, a list of emergency low quote and state contract orders issued by purchasing department for the month of October. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, recognize the sheriff, has some reports on the number of persons currently guessed housed in Harrison County jail.
Uh, currently, we have seven seventy-two total, six fifty-seven at the jail, hundred fifteen at the work center, forty-three misdemeanors, hundred thirteen females, eighty-nine have cleared, uh, state arrest, and fifty-one failed inmate.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, order approving claims as listed to be paid from the court account. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Item twenty-five, Madam President.
Excuse me for my absence, please. Number twenty-five is order bring, uh, approving agreement between Harrison County and Machado Patano P L L C for architectural services related to construction of Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-six is order authorizing advertising uh, for bid for police outfit packages for the twenty sheriff, um, sheriff's office Tahoe's. Uh, approved November second, twenty twenty, motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor-
I have a question. Was that not, that, that amount was not included in the original? So you would need to offer a question.
Well, we're just going out for bids right now.
Yeah, we're gonna have some idea for the lease, that's what I was trying, for the lease purchase.
That was not in the original process. No, we always-
So once we get-
Get the bid and then-
It's always been, what we've always done is, is y'all pay for the, the vehicles every three years and I pay for the outfit, which outfits roughly around a hundred and twenty thousand somewhere around that.
So these are the-
So we should check this.
I paid for this outfit for sure.
So this will be covered, I don't have to break this.
Or I can put it, y'all can give me the budget and then figure it out.
Well, we need a way of going on how much it is yet.
Ask me, I know they want to pay that if it's leases on the year.
Yeah, we just keep them up there.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. I'll pose a motion, carry. Number twenty-seven, order approving payout application number two with, uh, for from, I'll get it straight in a minute. Uh, Samuel B. Day Construction Incorporated for the construction of a metal building for Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and five payable from, is that correct? Payable from zero zero one dash twenty, oh, you mean dash two hundred dash nine oh two. Is that, uh, can we look at that number again, Pam?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand, is that right, Sharon? Twenty-one thousand, one hundred thousand dollars?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Okay, just as a comment, so it needs a, a scribbler, so just a scrip.
I didn't put that one in.
Okay, just have it-
You think it should be, I mean, you, you think it should be more?
No, dear. I'm just trying to get it correct on our-
Yes, twenty, it's twenty.
Twenty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars, period, zero, zero, yeah. I'm just trying to get it straight, because it's, it's a little confusing. I just want to make sure it's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by a, with, by aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-eight is order approving pay application number eight from a D C construction and group, L L C, Harrison County Adult Detention Center jail upgrades and repairs in the amount of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars in that, and seventy-five cents payable from three one three dash two two four dash nine oh two, as recommended by Brad Patano, uh, Principal of Machado and Patano Group Design Motion. Second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number twenty-nine is order spreading on the minutes, the following executed documents, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carries. Under control is order approving payment in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents to the city of Biloxi for the quarter-
Fourth quarter.
For the fourth quarter of F Y twenty-twenty final payment for the Biloxi court bonds payable from zero seven eight dash one hundred dash nine, seven, zero, one, um, detail calculated.
Motion.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carry. Number thirty-one is order authorizing following interface transfers from, um, reimbursement of Hurricane Delta pre-storm expenditures eh, into, uh, fund one seven six dash zero 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 dash thirty dash thirty-eight seven.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carry. Number thirty-two, is order authorizing the following interface loans re- and repayments per the attached schedule, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carry. Number thirty-three, under Chancy Clark is order authorizing issuance of deep warrants as listed per cer- uh, certificates and affidavits filed with the Chancy Clark's office, forty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, fifty-six cents, motion. Second. Discussion.
Well, yeah, this guy lost his forty-one thousand dollar check. What's the deal with that?
I tell you what, you tell anyone, I guarantee I wouldn't lose that.
Isn't that what this means?
Yeah.
I don't mean.
Lost him now.
Cause that was, was lost in there, he didn't lose.
We're gonna be looking real hard for it in the next few months. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carry. Order approving payments and claims as listed, motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Order approving continuation and of the proclamation of the existence of a local agency within Harrison County due to the spread of COVID-nineteen as adopted on March fifteenth, twenty twenty, motion?
Motion, but only through December thirty-first.
Second.
Second.
I'm gonna have it.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carrying. Number thirty-six is order. Take off the table, item. Number seventy-seven of the November second, twenty twenty meeting, acknowledging receipt of stop work order for the Thailand's management pro- project FY nineteen dash M six twenty-six dash twelve, sand beach washups, uh, cleaning, eh, uh, approving said stop order and authorizing the board president to execute the same. Y'all all understand that?
No, because I brought this up before. We are behind eight ball on this. We shouldn't even be talking about this. This was done. All this has been undone since this occurred.
What you're saying is the fine ticket been released.
Correct, so why are we doing this? I mean, this is crazy to me. This is when the, the little, uh, tip between the powers that be, you know, who controls the Thailand's money, so stop work order was issued, but it's my understanding that that tip has now been repaired.
And, well, it says down here, there's the Thailand's management washups of the second one. After we take this one off the table, but we have to take this one off the table first, uh, that's the way I, that's the way I understand it. So, let's take this off the table and then we'll move on to thirty-seven. Have a motion to take this off the table?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, we've had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carry. Number thirty-seven is order acknowledging receipt of stop work order for the Thailand's management project FY nineteen dash M six, uh, twenty-six dash twelve, sand beach washups cleaning, uh, approving said stop order and acknowledging the board president to execute the same.
See, this is where I have the problem.
Yeah, it stopped and it stopped.
Motion to table.
Second.
But, okay.
When you wanna get rid of it, but.
Yeah.
Well, not when we're approving the stop order. That's what it says. Okay, which one?
All we're doing is acknowledging receipt of.
No.
And you're.
Making it.
Yeah.
We're not.
We're.
We're not, this, like.
Wait, what is your time?
Stop work order. We simply acknowledging receipt of it.
Uh, also authorizing the board president to sign the acknowledgement.
Did not.
So, execute.
Yeah.
It says approving said stop order and authorizing the board president to execute same. That's on number thirty-seven.
Thirty-six. Or thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, cause we took it off the table.
Been resolved after.
Who issued the stop work order?
The, uh.
The, uh.
DMR.
DMR, uh, uh, why would we?
It sounds, Miss.
Why would we have to approve it?
Well, my recommendation is, it sounds like it's mooted anywhere.
I think it is.
That's why I asked us if it's been.
So just deny it as being moot.
Okay, what's wrong with my motion? Substitute motion to deny.
Get it off the agenda.
Does it, things cleaned up? Has, has this, has this washup been taken care of and paid for?
It wasn't, it was.
You, you see, the problem would be, uh, like him, doesn't matter now, if, if the stop work order been lifted, it doesn't matter. But if it were not lifted and we're denying, the, uh, uh, we're saying we're not gonna approve the stop work order, who gonna pay for it? If they continue working? DMR has approved.
That's my question as well. I, I read it as, as that, that there's a stop order and we're not gonna get paid for it.
It was, but my understanding is, Mr. Martin, is the fact issue got resolved, the stop order got lifted, so this is old and, but you want it off your agenda.
Either way.
Off the agenda is to either grant it or deny it.
Yeah.
June nineteenth.
You want it offered?
I would remember.
To what offered, you want table to make sure that it is been paid? You know for sure it's been paid?
I don't know for sure, but I'm just looking at the date, June nineteenth, twenty.
Either way, if it has not been, uh, lifted and we say we're not gonna approve it, I hope, uh, and the work is gonna be stopped, cause DMR is the one paying for it.
If you want.
But the work has already been done.
Sure.
All right, I, red, go back to my original motion to table.
Okay.
And please let's find out.
We'll find out.
For sure.
If this has been paid for.
Pretty sure.
We owe it still, whatever. Okay, we have a motion to table, number thirty-seven. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Number thirty-eight is order acknowledging receipt of spreading on the minutes, the final actuary uh, report, uh, of liabilities cover, coverage for Harrison County from casualty actual, actuarial, actuarial, um, consultants incorporated. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, all opposed, motion carry. Number thirty-nine is order approving payment of casualty actual, eh, action, so actuary, I can't speak today. Uh, consultants incorporated in the amount of three thousand, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the actuary report on, uh, liability coverage in the, to be paid from the tort account, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Number forty is order, um, acknowledging receipt of the award of, uh, O, uh, AOC Caters Act grant for second circuit, um, intervention court and county court and authorizing this same budget amendment. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Number forty-one, order adjudicating the tax sale of August thirty-one, twenty twenty for tax, uh, parcel number zero three one two K dash zero three dash one five five, decimal zero 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 for twenty nineteen taxes erroneous and, or, and thus void abor- ab initio, eh, for related purposes, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Can we maybe include, ask Ms. Paula if she'll include the values? So we can look at it at a, at a glance. I see this one is about thirty-two thousand, about.
Yeah, what, it went to SBA and shouldn't have been foreclosed on, but, I mean, on tax, so, so that's what you, for, 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 for. Um, I don't know, like, payment of the taxes.
That's what I'm.
I don't know, they're, they may or may not be exempt.
Uh, is that, uh, did I hear somewhere that it could be forgiven if it was an SBA loan? I don't know where I heard that.
Well, this one, the backup says it was foreclosed on, so it wasn't forgiven in that case. Foreclosed, getting, making all the property. It should have been.
They should pay the taxes on it.
Well, they, they may or may not be exempt, I didn't look at that, this has to do with prior owners' tax, so.
But if they forgive the SBA loan and then he just pays the taxes, then they just pay the taxes.
They used them foreclosed.
Okay.
Foreclosed.
SBA, yeah. All right. Uh, we have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Number forty-two is order adjudicating the sales tax of thirty-one, uh, on, of August thirty-one, twenty twenty on sales parcel number zero eight eleven G dash zero four dash zero twenty-seven, decimal zero zero one for two thousand nineteen taxes erroneous and thus ab initio and for related purposes, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
This was a wrongful assessment, but the city got bored and so the taxes paid on that assessment. And you could have overthrew it, and of course, taxes will be paid when this occurs.
We have a motion. Second. Any further discussions? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Number forty-three is order approving payment of one thousand five hundred and nine dollars and ninety cents to the city, uh, to Paschus Chan Public School District annual rent for release of storage site for sixteen section, uh, sixteen session land located in Paschus Chan Public School District payable from the one, one five, zero, seven, one five thirty-three, same amount as last year, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carry. Number forty-four is order acknowledging receipt of and concurring with the proclamation by Governor Tate Reeves declaring the following days as legal holidays, motion?
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion, isn't, should we include Wednesday on this?
We, I don't think we can.
It's a bad day.
You can't, th- this closes the courthouse.
I know, but, did we already do that, uh, for eleven eleven?
Uh-huh.
Wednesday, November.
Oh, we've already done that one with our red, where.
It is a holiday.
With our red card holiday, November eleven. These were additional days.
Okay, so I just noticed, uh, November on.
Okay. We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carry. Number forty-five is order adjudicating authorizing expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise opportunities and resources of, uh, Har- Harrison County, Mississippi, payable from zero zero two da- uh, dash, eh, one hundred dash five twenty-two, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion.
Aye.
No, all opposed. Uh, so, uh, all opposed, motion carry. Record one minute. Uh, reuse court, number forty-six, is discuss the, um, family court drug enhancement grant in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars at no extra cost to the county.
Here's the app.
He is out there.
May, may I, Mr. Justin, would it be prudent to go into executive session to discuss the litigation before we talk to him in reference to this grant?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Electric executive session.
We have a motion and second, second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion going to executive session.
Well, can I?
Uh, do we do that after before?
Well, I've just got one quick thing.
Okay, well.
There's actually two.
You wanna start with you or start with Sheriff?
You have anything?
No.
You have anything? You have anything? You have anything?
Yeah, I have one, um. Don't think it was on here, just your, your request for a resolution on the region of Coast Mental Health, or is that something you want to discuss now?
Or do you want to discuss it in the executive session?
No, I, it's, it's whatever y'all want to hear.
You can explain it better to me.
Okay, transition, come on, let me, let me sit this restless. Or do you want to read it?
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm with y'all, copy.
And this one. This is concerning.
Got to try to smile.
One of our issues. Okay. I just, now, this is a resolution of the board supervising, we've sent the request in mission to the region seven, five, one, 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 care of resources, um, uh, uh, area.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, please. Discussion.
The, the request to join Pine Belts catchment area, which is region twelve, is based upon their, their, um, agreement to include Harrison, Hancock, and Stone Counties into their catchment area with an estimated target date of February one.
Yay.
Um, so on Friday, the Board of Commissioners for Region Thirteen, which is the Coast Mental Health, met and passed a resolution recommending two to three counties that you do this request. Pine Belts Commission is expected to meet in the morning and accept the request. So it's done very quickly. Um, basically, in, in short order, here, here's what you're gonna do. You're gonna commit to budget for the next three years, what you budgeted for this year, and this year will be paid pro rata. It's approximately two point one million, which is less than the two point eight million you paid this past year. Little bit more than before, but, but it's still better than where you were. Secondly, um, they require that we go to the state health depart- mental health department and give permission. They have approved. They're gonna reallocate the grants based on Harrison two, two twelve. And then, um, administration for twelve has been, thirteen has been informed, and they're gonna meet with the employees tomorrow. And then with regard to the buildings, they want us to commit to entering to lease agreements to allow them to continue use. I think you're gonna find there's some deferred maintenance issues, we don't know. And so, imagine that, and so we're probably gonna have some other to do on those buildings, but mental thirteen will have to wind down, that's gonna take a little bit of time, so it's not gonna close February one, but, um.
Well, it's not gonna close.
It's not gonna close at all.
It's gonna. No, no.
Don't say that.
Transfer.
No, 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 no. Harrison County is going to ask to join region twelve, Pine Bell. Thirteen is not.
Where mental health will continue.
Absolutely. This, so, so that, that thirteen is not gonna merge, it's not gonna join. The three counties are going to ask to join Pine Bell. Coast Mental Health will wind down.
It will dissolve at some.
Eventually, at some point.
The services will still be.
Will continue.
Pine Belts will then offer the same services to Harrison County residents, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And, and, and there, and there may be an expansion of some services. I mean, they, they may do some things we don't do.
So we're doing this to improve the quality and the service to our people in our district?
Oh, without question. It is to enhance, improve, and preserve long-term quality mental health care for, for residents of the county, and everybody's been dealing with it. I really believe this is probably the most logical.
Stability.
It is, long-term.
Stability and clarity, yeah.
So. They agreeing to maybe consider keeping some of our staff?
They have agreed to allow every employee who is at region thirteen to apply. And, um, and, and given their commitments that if those folks are good quality people who, who do their job well, they, they will apply the points.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, and Pam, thank you too. I know you two ladies have worked and worked and worked on this, and you are to be highly commended in my opinion. Cause we, you know, we, no, but we have a motion, and we have a second, and we've had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, amen.
Hallelujah. Amen.
Yeah, then the only other thing, Madam President, I have, is I'd like to clarify our leave policy. Brought to my attention that we have at least one employee who's had a pretty serious injury, and she's facing very formal major surgery. And right now, our donor leave policy says it has to be a catastrophic injury. And, um, as defined below, I would like to delete the word catastrophic so that any employee wishes to donate leave to an employee for an injury or illness, that they have the right to do that.
But why is that catastrophic?
To me, it is, but it doesn't fall under that, so I'd like to make a motion that we delete the word catastrophic and leave it to whoever is suffering from an injury or illness.
Or prolong.
Or to another employee who has a member of his or her immediate family who is suffering from an injury.
That's what I was gonna say. I'll stick it up and discussion.
This is county, you say this is county what?
Yes.
It would be, yeah.
We have a motion and second discussion. Go ahead.
If I have, we have some employees that have way too much leave that are willing to donate to somebody who's hourly, then I, I think that should be between them.
I agree. And catastrophic, I'm glad you threw it out, because like when my son had open heart surgery, I was off to work for eight weeks, and all my friends wanted to give me, but it wasn't allowed, so it was a hardship.
Because it's not considered, right, it's not considered catastrophic.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Thank you. Thank you.
You all say aye.
Uh, I'm good.
I think the judge is waiting.
Well, we're gonna go into the session.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Y'all just wait a minute.
Well, now, we could take that.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right, the circuit clerk was named in a lawsuit filed with Mississippi Indian River Law Department, legal women voters, no reason to bring this up, just because by the time women doesn't need, we'll have to answer this lawsuit, we need to do it before then. It has to do with a statute that requires a circuit clerk to require a nationalized citizen to show proof that they were nationalized. It's been pending since two thousand and nineteen, between state and state, and they added in four or five circuit clerks for some reason, I don't know why. Circuit clerk, it's in Jackson, it's the only bad thing, so. They shouldn't, she shouldn't be a part of the lawsuit, and she's following the law, and as long as it's the law, I don't know what they think she could be.
Make a motion, do we have a motion?
Order adjudicating employment of the defendant's circuit clerk.
Second.
Yeah, second.
And Tamara, you need to include the legal issue with youth court.
Madam, this is from the.
This is not a decision, this is just an order that we had.
Just an order authorizing.
Order authorizing us to.
I got you, go ahead.
This is the order, uh, authorizing our attorney to assist.
Defend our circuit clerk.
Defend our circuit clerk. We have a motion and second discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried.
That's, that's it.
That's it, okay, now. Now, do we have to go into the discuss that we don't?
Why don't you just ask the question as a president, if, if any supervisor feel we need to go into, if somebody speaks up, then move on to executive session.
Okay. Does anyone have any objections to go into executive session?
It clearly qualifies for a record for executive session on multiple fronts, including potential litigation.
Can I add one?
Yes, I'm sorry to see.
Mine is just HR, that HR department.
Personnel matter.
First time in a minute.
Okay.
Well, I'm prepared to discuss the separation publicly.
Yes, that's what I prefer.
Do what?
I said I'm prepared to discuss the other one publicly, if y'all want to.
It does, I think.
I don't know to me either, I'm just.
We're gonna get on HR.
The HR would.
I, the only thing I want to know is from Tim, whether we have any, do we have any legal skin in this game?
We can go into executive session, we should talk about, to talk about.
The only thing I want to know, do we have, do we have any legal skin in the game, do we have, can we do anything with that loss, that suit that, uh, Mr. Geis was talking about?
There, there's the only thing that the board has, well, the board's jurisdiction over elected official is primarily the budget, um, and so that is the authority of the board. Uh, that does obviously indicate a lot of things in this instance, because there is litigation pending. If this board felt that it had an interest in that litigation, then I think the board would be in its authority to inter, intervene in that litigation and take whatever position the board, the majority wants to take. There is a potential.
I think it needs to be discussed, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we're going to executive session to further discuss, because it's got potential.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session.
That and a HR, that and a.
Personnel matter.
And HR personnel matter, and we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, and can we take our five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and second to come out of the executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
I made a motion to.
Marlon, second. Somebody go ahead.
Somebody.
Okay, we are here to, anyone to report on our executive session, Tim?
In the course of executive session, the board is discussing the matter involved in potential litigation, law process that Harrison County court judge, no action was taken, and the board also discussing personnel matter involved in the human resources position, no action was taken.
Just, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the board supervisors to authorize our strength to handle any, uh, issue between the youth court judge and Casa.
We have a motion, motion?
Second.
A motion and second, new discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay.
Can you take it off the table?
Motion to take off the table, item number forty-six. Discuss the family drug court enhancement grant in amount of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Take it off the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
So now, I need to make a motion to discuss the family drug court enhancement grant in amount of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars at no extra cost to the county, I'll make that motion.
Right.
Motion, second, to discuss the, um, grant, and to start the discussion. You can take it.
My mask off.
Mask off.
All right. May I begin?
Sure.
All right, thank you all, first of all, very much, for putting this item on the docket of the agenda, excuse me, towards the end, allowing me the opportunity to finish my morning document this morning, come over here and talk to you about this grant. Um, I have had Valerie pass out a package of information to each of you, uh, all of the documentation in that package you've all seen before, with the exception of three things. Uh, that's exhibit one, exhibit two, and exhibit three, those three things are research related to visitation, family time, uh, and drug courts. It would be okay with you all, I have prepared a memorandum, I would just like to go through that and walk through this, I do not know what questions you all have, uh, we asked that it be put on this agenda for approval to accept this grant. I do note that it was put on to, uh, discuss it, we reached out to see if there were any questions that we could prepare for, for you all to answer, I did not receive any questions, so I don't know, uh, exactly what your questions may be, which you wish to discuss. Our request is today that the Harrison County Youth Court, um, is requesting the board supervisors to enter an order approving and allowing Harrison County Youth Court to accept this eight hundred thousand, uh, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollar OJJDP family drug court enhancement grant. The deadline for accepting this is, excuse me, is November the third. As you all know, uh, at its March twenty-third, twenty twenty meeting, the board supervisors authorized the youth court to apply for a grant made available by, by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. Uh, as I previously reported to you, and I am pleased again to announce, uh, this grant has been awarded, and with your approval, I will notify the OJJDP that Harrison County is pleased to accept that award. Why do we qualify for this grant? When I began my term as youth court judge in January twenty nineteen, the Mississippi Department of Child Protection Services had approximately eight hundred Harrison County children in custody. Most of them were in Harrison County foster homes. This inordinately high number of children needing foster care, which was approximately four times the per capita average for Mississippi counties, caused a shortage in available foster homes, and many children were placed in the Harrison County emergency shelter until a suitable foster home could be located. An exceedingly high percentage of children coming to state custody, which in Mississippi is more than eighty percent, are not abused, but rather they are neglected by parents who lack the resources and skills to, to take care of their children. At approximately the same time I began my term as youth court judge, the Children's Bureau, which is the Department of the United States Department of Health and Human Services, instituted a major change in child welfare philosophy and funding by emphasizing and promoting in-home services to, to and educate families on proper care for their children, allowing them to keep neglected children at home and avoid the substantial life-changing trauma of removal of children from their homes and placing them with strangers. This new emphasis on keeping children at home with substantial in-home services has proven extraordinarily successful. Accordingly, safely, the number of Harrison County children in state custody has been reduced from approximately eight hundred when I began to three hundred and eleven as of November the first, twenty twenty. This has resulted in both an abundance of available foster homes for children that must be removed, as well as a decrease, not a nonexistent, but a decreased need for emergency shelter placement. You may recall that Hancock County was in a very similar situation a couple of years ago, uh, prior to my election, except that rather than four times, they had ten times the number of per capita average, uh, children in custody as other Mississippi counties.
May, may I interrupt?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't, didn't they close their shelter altogether?
They converted it to a visitation center, which is exactly why we are here today.
Are you talking about Brenda's House?
That is exactly.
Brenda's House is not funded by Hancock County completely, they give donations to it.
I'm not saying, in terms of funding, I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is they converted their shelter into a visitation center, and I'll explain why, I'll explain why, let me finish this, because it's in here, and it's.
I'm sorry, I just have to do one.
That's all.
Yeah, you, I have to.
I give you permission.
She can ask questions when she chooses.
Okay.
Judge Trent Farr began serving as Hancock County Youth Court Judge exactly one year before I began my term, and he immediately implemented the state-at-home approach in Hancock County, and following the national guidelines and best practices research focused on implementing in-home monitoring when safely possible to do so. The Hancock County Youth Court has experienced nearly identical results as Harrison County, with a decrease in the number of children in custody, CPS custody, and more children being served in their own homes safely. Interestingly, Hancock County has also been awarded an OJJDP grant, theirs was seven hundred and forty-two thousand. As you know, our shelter has existed since the nineteen sixties, and has been available for families to visit with their children in state custody for many years. In fact, the two thousand and eight Shelter Handbook states, visitation with a child by family members is allowed when you have authorization from shelter supervisor. DHS representative has to be present, supervise all visits unless you are advised otherwise by youth court staff. As a youth court judge, I have promoted and encouraged family visitation, what is now called family time, as being a critical part of the reunification process of healing families and returning children to their homes. I'm attaching the ACYF CBIM twenty oh two, here, and it's tabbed for you if you want to flip through, um, it marks some things in it. It talks about visitation, visitation plans, how critical it is for families and siblings, how critical the frequency is, and the fact that the more visitation among families, uh, the quicker the reunification process. Uh, on page five of it, it goes through a list of things that are extremely important, who all is present, where the time together is spent, how the time together is spent, whether attention is focused or divided, those kind of things. I don't want to go through this whole thing, but I'm offering this to you because it is, clearly backs up this, this idea of using our shelter as a visitation center. Okay, if you look on page eleven of exhibit one, we have what's called innovative approaches, and then if you flip over to page twelve, you'll see that in this national publication, Hancock County, Mississippi has converted a former children's shelter into a family time meeting place, and they go through and they talk about how this is set up. They characterize that as an innovative, research-based best practice in terms of trying to unify families, that is exactly what our hope is with the shelter and utilizing it as a visitation center. This is from the Administration for Children and Families, uh, the Children's Bureau, and it was released earlier this year. This publication is solely dedicated to family time and visitation for children and youth in out-of-home care, as I said, it provides information on research, best practices, resources, and recommendations for children and youth in out-of-home care. Meaningful and high-frequency family time that strengthens a family, expedites reunification, and improves parent and child well-being outcomes. I'm also attaching standard six provision D, which is exhibit two, which is pulled directly from the family treatment court best practice standards. The importance of high-quality parenting time is such that it warranted an entire provision to be dedicated to it. In this attachment, you will find, uh, more concrete recommendations about frequency and duration of parenting and family time.
May I, may I ask again, and interrupt? On, on those, um, who is on, who makes these conclusions? Is it federal government, is it, uh, people, I mean, because I don't, there's a lot of us that don't necessarily feel like, or I can't speak freely about myself, that the federal government fixes everything, because the federal government has screwed up a lot of things, in my opinion, and I'll go on record saying that, because, I mean, they're just too far removed, and they are not addressing the real issues that we face on the ground in the ditch.
Well, so, for instance, like, we're talking about family time, family visitation time, and how that contributes to the reunification of the family.
Yeah, but, but I don't know if they know all the details, ins and outs, but who, who decided this, I mean, did they study it for a long period of time?
Yes, ma'am.
Was it a, a national group was?
So this is the.
I know Hancock County is, you know, doing it, but I haven't heard, I guess I don't really know about the Hancock County, uh, program, because I understood they closed their shelter altogether.
They converted.
They did close the shelter side of it, and the, it's for the same reason that I mentioned earlier, because they don't have a need for it over there. We do have a need, like I said, it's, it's decreased here, but it's not nonexistent, and again, what we're trying to do, which is, you know, what I discussed before the board back in November twenty nineteen, again in March, and then discussed it on WLOX for about forty-five minutes in my courtroom, the way that we're using the shelter now is we are still using it as a traditional shelter when placements are necessary, but we are also utilizing it as a visitation center, and because of that, it benefits our FIP participants, our family adventure participants, and it is for that specific reason, that reason, that we do not have to come up with any additional county funds in order to receive this grant.
It's six hundred thousand dollars that.
Yeah, a whole lot of county funds.
So that is a lot of county funds.
But that's been in place for years, it's not something new that we're having.
But Judge, we didn't know, for a year and a half, you had been using it without this board's knowledge before I was even elected. Ms. Martin got calls in January when we were in Jackson from WLOX, that they were getting unanimous, excuse me, anonymous calls from employees of the county saying they felt threatened by you, they were fearful of you, they spoke the truth about our tax dollars being spent to this governing body, at least six people I can think off the top of my head, you gave numbers to this board saying that, oh, fifty-five kids were being, sixty kids are being, knowing all along that we did not understand that it was for visitation, when we asked you to not have it for visitation because it was unsupervised with our employees who are not trained to watch potential defendants, the sheriff himself stood right there and said he would not put security there because it was not right. You continue to do it, we wrote you a letter two Thursdays ago saying no more visitation, we've said it again and again, and two days later, you put on Facebook the visitation center, AKA the shelter, you've repurposed it, changed the name, I have pictures of things you've written calling it the Family Resource Center, you've taken our shelter, changed the name, and done what you've wanted without checking with a governing elected body, that's the bottom line.
I respectfully disagree with you, I have multiple times, multiple times told you guys what I'm doing with that shelter, about visitation, we came in here, we discussed it multiple times, and in fact, in fact, I, I gave you guys the full and complete application for this grant in advance of you approving it.
Right, we haven't approved it yet.
And it is, it is, it lays it out in there, it lays it out in there, clear as a bell.
Judge, can I ask you a question regarding to the grant? Is your intention is, my understanding was, and correct me if I'm wrong, your intention is to get that shelter licensed?
That's separate and apart from the grant, but yes, that, that is one.
So it's not part of the grant?
No, it is not.
And if you get that shelter licensed, does that open up that, uh, the shelter would have to be available to the, how many counties, eighty-two counties in Mississippi, the other eighty-one counties would be, have access to that shelter?
If, if licensed, CPS would. If, is license, CPS would be allowed to make a recommendation to place children there?
Any, from anywhere in the state?
As far as I know, anywhere.
Then we would have to pick up that cost.
Well, that's the whole idea behind getting it licensed, because if it is licensed, when a child is placed there, regardless of where they're placed from, what county, there is a board payment that goes along with it.
What board? Who's board?
A board payment.
A board, a board.
Yes.
Who pays it?
All right. Second, let me ask you specifically enough to the grant that you're asking us to approve it. If I understand what you're saying is that your intentions are now to use that facility, what was the shelter, as a visitation center? That's what you're saying?
Yes, we, like I said, and I gave you a copy of.
I got you. I just want to make.
This is not something that we're saying is brand-new here. Visitation is taken.
I know that. I'm just trying to get a clarification. To me, we can't spend six hundred thousand, actually it's more, it's roughly about seven hundred and some thousand when you consider the nine, ten employees that we pay to work there. I just can't see us doing that for visitation. We can find another facility, a room, or a couple rooms somewhere.
It's great on.
Well, they don't need that much space.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
And here the county is not this big.
We can find you a facility somewhere that you, we would be happy to take some of that money that you're talking about, that we're paying these, that shelter and whatever other costs we're assuming, not only employee cost, and find you a place for, for visitation. Because I assume visitation doesn't require overnight stays.
Visitation is not typically overnight.
That's correct. So why would we need the shelter and continue the use of that shelter and employees at that shelter for whatever cost, seven hundred thousand or so a year?
Well, the last budget we settled was five hundred thousand.
Oh, five, all right, I'll say five hundred thousand. We'll, we can find you a facility for visitation, because I understand what you're saying. You want to keep kids with families, and that's all part of it. I support the drug, the part that you're asking for as far as the employees and the van. However, we got to assume when that three-year grant is done, when that money's gone, you come into this board and we're going to have to pay for those three employees that we hired at this grant, because I don't think you're going to want to give them up due to the grant money. I'm simply saying there's no reason why we can't find you a facility to have visitations that you're describing for families to come in and visit. Well, so I'm not, I'm not prepared. I'm being honest with you with the cost. When we look at a cost-benefit analysis, I'm not prepared to continue spending taxpayers' money at six hundred or seven hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, whatever, whatever it is, just to have a visitation center. We can find something a lot cheaper than that.
It wouldn't be just, it would not be just a visitation center.
Well, what else would be?
It would be a traditional shelter for emergency-only placement, emergency-only.
How many people you got? How many kids are in there right now?
I'm not saying we need to convert that to strictly a visitation center.
How many kids do you have in there right now?
I believe we just have one. Valerie, do you know?
Unless that one or two, there was two last week that were supposed to be placed somewhere else this week. I'm not sure if that's how it goes.
But we're really, I think we have to get licensure to even place children there, right?
Not convert.
Well, okay, so there's a difference between, in terms of placement in the shelter, there's a difference between CPS having the ability legally to make the recommendation that they be placed there. With the Olivia Wise settlement agreement, they do not have that ability because it is not licensed. It has never been licensed. Every child that has ever been placed at the shelter has been under a court-ordered placement.
But, but that's what I'm saying. In your experience, since you've been a judge, how many emergency placements, which would allow you to put someone in a shelter? If I understand, you make that decision based on emergency? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
I could make that call. You're asking me if I have the authority to make that call.
Yeah, you can do that in, in, through, from the bench. You can order a child to be placed overnight.
Correct.
Okay. In your experience, since you've been on the bench, how many children have you had to do that for emergency?
I don't know. I, I honestly don't know.
Rough guess, two, three, four, or five?
We have.
Over a period of what you've been, Judge, a couple of years?
Yeah.
One year, couple of years?
I started January twenty nineteen. There have been, there have been a few times in those situations. One of the things that we, and I believe I put this out, set this out in a letter to you all, and this is true across the state, they call them HTPs, hard-to-place. These are the older kids who are rung. And if you put them in a foster home, they're rung. And so the last three kids that were placed in shelter were foster kids who were rung. The emergency side of things, at this stage, because CPS cannot make that recommendation, we don't see a whole lot of kids on emergency placement for one or two nights because they can't make that recommendation. It would be different once it's licensed.
Well, that's my concern. Once we, once we license that facility, and as you indicated, CPS from anywhere in the state, and how many, how many shelters do we have? Licensed shelters in the state?
Not very many.
One?
Wayne County had one, and I'm not sure if it's still left or not. Judge, you mentioned hard-to-place, HTP, hard-to-place, because they're runners from foster homes. We had a runner, you had a runner, that we weren't made aware of. Seventeen-year-old, right? Who ran away, and we've never found him. He's off the books, right? Never been found.
I'm not going to talk about pending matters. I'm not going to talk about.
We're not using it anymore. My point is, hard-to-place in the shelters, they ran away too, so it's not like a foster home.
You know, it's just like a criminal. You can't stop somebody from committing a crime. That's what they're going to do.
Yeah.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you can't stop them. If they want to run, they're going to run.
Right, but they should just be able to walk out.
Well, you just mentioned they run from foster homes, so the shelter's the perfect place. And I'm just making the point that we have lost one who ran away and was never found. That's all I'm making the point.
I'm not disputing that at all.
Okay.
Judge, if I may, with the foster homes too, they have the ability to, if they're preface with, and it's made, yeah, placed, but if they're preface with a CPS worker that they're runner, almost a hundred percent of the time, they're going to deny that child a home anyway. So the emergency basis would be the shelter at that point, because no foster home is willing to take a child who might have ran the pass. So that's where the nature of the emergency, emergency shelter comes into play, is because these foster homes don't want that in their home, and so they don't want to take that chance. And so that's where the emergency nature comes in.
But assuming that the same people working at the shelter now, that would be working there when they're licensed, is there security people there? Or is it, who's going to keep them from running? You can't, you cannot, you cannot keep them from running. So what, I guess what's the difference in putting them in a foster home without a run and put them in a shelter that's costing us money to run?
In terms of the placement, I mean, ideally, like I've said to you before, it's always ideal to have a child in an actual home. But if they're not going to stay in a home, why not give it a shot at the shelter? It's got to be better, a hundred percent of the time, if you're putting them in a hotel room with a sitter.
Well, if y'all remember, Mag Holland was one of the moms, I mean, one of the foster mothers that came and spoke to us, saying that after Katrina, they had a whole list and recalled emergency foster home placement. And Mag was more than willing to do that list again. They're all already CPS certified, trained to be foster homes, so we already have that. And remember, the shelter, as you know, is the very last. It goes into four or five layers. It's the very, very last net catch. And we already have someone like Mag Holland who stood here and told us that she could get a list of twenty people tomorrow. That would take the hard-to-place.
That's what she said.
That's what she said, and I confirmed it again last week.
Guys, using the shelter as a visitation center is a thing of the future. If you don't want to embrace this research, that's up to you. I'm just telling you, this is where this is going. The fact that we had put in place in Harrison County, research-based best practices and standards, you are seeing positive results from this. I don't know what people are telling you in other meetings or in private. I have no idea. I know without a doubt, I have not been given an opportunity to respond to this whole CASA thing, and I know they were here this morning.
Yeah, I'd be lucky to respond to that.
And I'll be happy to do that. It's, you have to know that it is one of the things that I have hoped to avoid, going out in public and talking about these bad things that are going to damage CASA. I don't want to do that. I love these advocates to death. But they're putting me in a position, and if y'all ask me to, I'll be happy to talk to you about it. We probably ought to go.
Go ahead.
I really, my question is, my, I, I think the board's question is, we have volunteers who want to help, and you have stopped them. Why in the world can't two entities that care so much about the baby get it together and help them? Why in the world cannot two adults or two, a group of adults who are so passionate about our children and our youth sit down and figure it out?
Let me ask you, why are?
Hold on, hold on. Let me answer this one question. I have not been one time given an opportunity to sit down with that board and explain my side of things.
Tell us.
It's the same as true here. You guys went down and went into an executive session and came out and passed a resolution in favor of CASA without asking me my side of the story. That board has done the same thing. They have run to you, they have run to WLOX. This is absolutely absurd. It is absurd. I sent a letter through Roger Wilder over to Billy Gottes and said, "I'd be happy, happy, to sit down and talk with you guys." They sent me a response and said, "We're not going to respond to you. We're not going to sit down and meet with you until after you put our advocates back on the cases", which solves none of the problems.
It does. It helps the children.
It helps the children in the meantime.
You think it does because you don't know my side of the story.
The kids are.
Come on.
The kid, the babies are the losers.
You don't, you don't know my side of the story, though. You have, we have to agree on that.
Did you put another group to advocate for the kids in HCP? Who replaced CASA?
I've not put another group.
He suggested that Hick County should take over, and that was projected six months ago by someone else, so.
I will, I don't, I will tell you this. National CASA has suggested that that board reach out to me and sit down and come to the table and talk about this the same way you guys did. And I appreciate that, because I'm totally, I was totally willing to do that, absolutely.
Was.
They have now filed an appeal with the Supreme Court. They want to do that. That's fine. I'll let that run its course.
But sir, the reason, all this started with the order that you sent. That started up, that was on your plate. There would be no appeal. There would be no other attorney had you not entered the order demanding that CASA get rid of a certain employee, or you weren't going to give them any more cases. Is that, that's the way I read it?
I would be happy to go into the executive session.
That's the way I read it. No. I'm done with the executive session.
We're done.
You're the one that wants to talk about it, let's talk about it. Come on.
What I want to do is talk about this grant. That's what I want to do.
Well, all of these answers are hinging on this, so that's why we want to know.
Why is it hinging on this?
Because I want to know what you're going to use this grant for and what that shelter for. Supervisor Latner's been trying to get it out of you.
I'm simply concerned about the shelter. And in reference to this grant, you, you getting the shelter licensed. County's going to have to deal with that when you do, for whatever costs are involved. And we're open, and even as you indicated, Judge, will have access to this shelter. I'm not prepared for that. I don't, I support your visitation efforts. I philosophically, I understand that, visitation effort. We don't need that shelter for the visitation efforts.
I understand.
I would be prepared to help find you a building or room or a place that people can be comfortable in with the visitation and everything. I'm going back to this grant. If the grant has, if the grant is, if the shelter and the licensing of that shelter is involved in the approval of this grant, that part I have a problem with. I do not have a problem with the drug part. Normally I would, and I'll be honest with you. Normally, when somebody comes to this board for a grant, and it involves hiring people, and those grants have an extended lifetime, five years, three years, whatever they are, once that grant is expired, and it's usually indicated in the grant, some responsibility of the receiving entity to maintain those employees. And, and if the program is that good, I'm, I'm serious with the drugs, you know, the drug part of it, the drug aspect of it, counseling the parents, get them off drugs so that you can, in fact, maybe get the kids reunited with the parent, I would be willing to pay that. But I've got a problem as it relates to this grant, the shelter. And I can't go with that. I cannot go with a licensure of Harrison County with the shelter, because it opens the whole state up to access to this thing.
Let me calm your fears on that. I thought I made it clear earlier. The licensing of the shelter has nothing to do with this grant or the fact that we are using it as a visitation center, period.
But doesn't the shelter, doesn't your part of the shelter have, is part of the matching monies that we're spending now? I don't know if whoever issued that grant thinks that we're going to continue to spend conservatively the five hundred thousand dollars a year and maintain that. I'm not for that. I'm saying, and the board has been biting a bullet here for about a year and a half with employees at that shelter not doing anything, sitting, for all practical purposes. We've been paying them for, not to say doing nothing, but not doing what they were originally hired to do. And I am not prepared as a member of this board anymore to continue paying those employees that cons five hundred thousand, but I think it's more, but I'm not going to argue with that part, any longer. So now, if, 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 if the approval of this grant by the people who give this grant is contingent upon our matching, this, a matching contribution, considering that five hundred thousand dollars with that grant, that's coming to an end. And if that's part of it, I can't go with it. So, but I would be prepared, and I'll shut up. I'm sorry to be interrupted. I am even prepared to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if that's what the actual cash contribution would be for you to do the drug part of this grant. I, as a member of this super, I can't speak to these guys, but I personally will vote to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to you or to this grant, to match this grant for your drug part of it. But I am not prepared to continue that shelter at the cost it is costing us to continue that for a visitation center. When I'd be willing to get, find some facility someplace else for you to have visitation, and I understand that. So that's where we are as far as the grant, at me personally.
So the matching portion is about sixty-nine thousand dollars a year. The reason that we'd have to come up with extra funds is because, as we laid out in that grant application that we sent to all of you, is because we utilize the shelter as a visitation center, which benefits our faculty funds. We are not required to match it at five hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. We're required to match it annually at six, I believe it's sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Those two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, two hundred and fifty. I'm just.
So, you're being generous.
Does it matter where the visitation facility is, as long as the county is providing it?
What matters in terms of this grant is how we apply for it. And we apply for it the way it was approved by you all to apply for it. And I cannot speak right now as to whether or not we will be able to manipulate where this money comes from or how it's spent by the county in terms of the match. I don't have the answer to that question.
I would assume that the people who are approving this grant, whoever the approving party is, looked at that shelter as part of, I guess, what you were offering as part of the, the matching part of it. And I'm simply saying, why would the shelter have to be the matching part as long as we providing either the cash or another facility at some cost for you to have your visitation?
I, the only thing I can say to that is what I've just said. I do not know, we have to talk to the grant manager about this, but I do not know whether or not they would approve that. I have to believe that the fact that we use the shelter as a visitation center, and that has already qualified us for it, that there's no, there would be very little chance that they would turn it down.
We might need to find out about that, and I wonder how much time we have to do that. Can we do that?
We have to accept this award no later than November the 30th.
November the 30th?
Yes. That's what, nineteen days or something. I'm happy to continue going through this, uh, I, if you want me to. I, I want to make this statement about this grant. I want to educate you on what we are doing, why we are doing it, and I want to give you the research that backs it up.
I'm sorry, did I miss your answer on why you no longer wanna work with CASA? What's your answer on that?
It is not that I don't wanna work with CASA. It is that I, I am absolutely, totally, and completely frustrated, and I've come to the, at the conclusion that I cannot work with Jeannie or this board, and the reason is simply that, like I said, you can believe what you wanna believe. I've got the letters to back it up. I asked, I reached out to them and asked them to meet with me in a letter, and they responded, and said, "We're not gonna do that until after you put advocates back on cases." And I realize that you guys have been giving one side of the story, and I understand.
But so you took the advocates off the cases before you talked to the board, so then you wanna talk to? Well, you, now, they're, they're words, they're words, not mine. You just said that, uh, you reached out to them to discuss it, and they said they weren't gonna discuss it with you until after you put the advocates back on the cases.
That is correct, in terms of what has happened recently.
So what happened to make you take them off in the first place? It can't be that hard.
I reached out to that board and, uh, brought up two issues and asked them to investigate those two issues.
Okay, what are they?
You have to understand that as a youth court judge, I've got to follow what the statutes say. Forty-three twenty-one, one twenty-one, seven, provides four different categories that I've got to be satisfied on before I have the discretion statutorily, before it's granted to me, uh, before I can place and assign.
A couple of things that you're not.
An advocate to cases. I have to ensure that they are properly trained, they are properly supervised. I've got to ensure that they have an adequate ability to, uh, advocate for the best interest of children, and I've got to ensure that that program, the Harrison County CASA program, is in compliance with state and national standards. Those are the statutory requirements placed on me before I am granted discretion to place an advocate on cases.
But why, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not being real clear.
They weren't meeting that criteria, Judge. CASA was not meeting that criteria.
I came to the conclusion that they are not meeting the criteria in all four of those categories. And I can most certainly lay this out to you all.
Well, which category specifically do you think they're not meeting?
Ma'am?
Which category? So, do you think they're meeting three of the four?
I don't believe they're meeting any of those four categories.
So you're gonna suggest that the training of Harrison Cas, Harrison County's CASA training is not good enough, is not even par, when they're coupled one of ninety thousand volunteers in the entire country, trained by CASA Harrison County, they're number one in the entire country.
Different than the training across this country, and you can actually.
Right, it's better.
Matter of fact, if you don't wanna take my word for it, because clearly this is a confrontational issue, reach out, reach out to our neighbors. Reach out to our neighbors, executive directors. Why don't you ask them what they think?
Well, they not, they ever tell me what upsets you to the point that you.
They can tell you about the training, that's what we're talking about.
And that's what I wanted, is what upsets you to the point that you issued an order to cut them off?
I, I just told you, but my concerns related to all four of those things.
I know, but I was just, but he's telling us to reach out to the neighbors.
The first, I'm sorry, did, but the first time the CASA board says to us, the first time you ever reached out to them about any problems with Jeannie Haron, was your letter telling them, "Demand she's fired," or y'all are done?
That is not the truth.
So when did you reach to do her? When did you reach out to her before that?
Matter of fact, it's in, it's in your affidavit that you're filing. Um, I attended a board meeting and brought up two issues and asked the, the board to investigate it, and to which my knowledge, they did not do anything at all about it. I know that if they had investigated it, legitimately investigated those issues, they would have come to the same conclusion that I came to.
Actually, just the opposite. They told us they believed it was your sour grapes and your personal vendetta against Jeannie, and not anything wrong that she has done. What are the actual things in concrete? It's not even been, you haven't even answered that. Your thirty days are up, and you didn't even give them the courtesy of a response.
So.
Well, it's sad to me, if we, if we kinda getting this person, to me, I don't know whether this, it should be out in this open court.
I agree with you, but I'm happy to do it.
No, I don't, I don't think we should be mentioning names.
Well, we said the executive director.
But I still don't, I don't agree with that.
Tim?
Except for the board, but I don't agree with that. I mean, cause obviously we want his opinion, but we want it in an open, this.
I just wanna know.
This should have some legal, this has some legal issues.
I wanna know.
I mean, but I mean, but we got legal issues here. Because this person named, if, if we're about to discuss, is part of that too. We should not be discussing it in this open.
Okay, well, then let's get back to the grant. Let's, we'll go back to the grant.
And then we can get back to the grant, but we keep asking questions about this.
I know.
We gotta determine what we're gonna do.
My main question was just want to.
Well, I think, I think Judge Stott showed up to ask us to approve the grant. I've expressed my concerns about the grant and, and matching funds, and I've also indicated my personal, uh, thinking that I would be willing to appropriate whatever necessary matching funds is, and you get your visitation. But I do have a problem with the shelter, and I don't think we need to have that type of supplement just for visitation.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we consider going ahead today and approving the receipt of this grant because we have a deadline of November the 30th, and I will, Valerie and I both will reach out to this grant manager, and we will find alternative ways to fund this match. I believe.
That's not, that's not the issue, because the issue, I think, we all agree, is you need to take the shelter off the table. That's the problem. Everything else you wanna do is fine, you just can't do it at the shelter.
What, what my issue with that specifically is that this is the way that you approved us to apply for it. That is how we apply.
This is the way that it was presented, though, as an, actually, it was blank the first time, and I went back and.
Just be honest with me, I did, I approved the shelter.
That's what it looked like the first time.
I approved the, the application for the grant, I think, is the way we said.
My memory's broken.
Without my knowledge concerning the licensure of that shelter. And I understand it now, but also the visitation aspect of it. And I just don't see using that building for a visitation.
That location.
I, I'm willing to get you another building or, or whatever, but I just.
Would the accident, oh, the accident.
What we got out there as a visitation center. I just think there'd be a more appropriate place, and that facility is gonna cost us more to maintain than it would be to find, I don't know, someplace where there's a room, an appropriate place for visitation, a lot less than what that, that facility's gonna cost us to maintain.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
I, I have, in terms of the location of the, the place for visitation, I've gotta disagree with you on that. Uh, that, that facility is set up perfectly for visitation, and if you review this research, you'll see that. You will see that it is ideal, the least restricted, most family-oriented setting for visitation.
With a bedroom and all that?
No, the playground, the playground, all of the, the, the common.
Well, we can find, if, if it's empty, we could find another.
We've got tons of playgrounds and splash pads in the county.
I'll find a healthy, but the shelter is an issue, I can tell you that.
I understand the cost of it, but, but I think you, I respect you, you will never be able to make the case to me in terms of the location and what is there, that there's a better facility out there. There's just not.
Well, it's too large. It's much too large, and like, how many people do you have vis, visiting at one time? This is what, seven thousand square feet? How, in bedrooms and bathrooms and.
They're out there in a playground, so they're not even in.
You love the playground of hope, and it is beautiful, but CPS themselves told our attorney, Tricia Tisdale, that they would prefer visitation in public, in Chick-fil-A, or the Lynn Meadows, or a splash pad. So we're hearing different things.
Well, we have a splash pad out there. I, I mean, I, you're not hearing different things from CPS because I know exactly what CPS is positioned on this, and I did read that letter that Pam sent to CPS, and then I read a second letter that Pam sent saying that CPS said they weren't gonna do visitation anymore, there anymore. And I'm certain, certain, after those letters went out, I'm certain that I have communicated with CPS, and they want to continue to use the shelter. They do.
That's not what they told us.
That's, well.
But that's.
Well, he said he's in.
They need to pay rent, because CPS, nobody can use a county-owned building for free. So CPS had the opportunity to, for a year, they should've been paying rent if they're out there, but I understand they're not really out there because they've been working from home, but, um, still, you know, they're, they're negotiating with the wrong person.
I mean, I don't have.
What about the canopy, the children canopy? That's, that's different. I know it's different, but is there a way that they can work together?
No, we, we have a space.
Space and.
The station across from the courthouse that has rooms, and they're, they're remodeling it now, and it could be, it'd be great.
Specifically for it?
Yes.
Specifically for it?
What are we talking about?
So in Gulfport, um, go ahead, in Gulfport, our, our Huskine courthouse in Gulfport, right across the street is that nice, long building. It used to be the corridor, Mr. The Extension Service in Canopy, who does forensic interviews with abused children. We moved out the corner, we moved out Mr. The Extension Service. They have this whole building now. They have two or three rooms you could probably use for visitation, and it's where, as she said, we're renovating it, we're making it beautiful, we're gonna paint it, there's gonna be flowers everywhere. Maybe that could be the perfect solution.
The only problem, I don't know. I can see with that is, is the, is the scheduling conflict. You know, the ABs don't wanna go there, which has a priority, and you send someone, that's the issue.
But his visitation is usually on the weekends.
For both uses, to divide it for both uses.
But isn't his visitation normally on the weekends? I know your reunification thing was.
No, it's all during, all during. Um, I don't know what property you're talking about. Um, I have no idea.
We'll take our word for it.
It's across the street from the.
It's just, just south of.
Just south of the new library.
It's still C A C, child, yeah, that child.
Yeah, that's one alternative, and then there's a skate park that has a beautiful brick building in front of it. It is huge. I'm, no, I'm not talking about it. I'm talking about the brick building in front that has. It's a voting precinct, and it has, there are several small rooms, and a huge area in the back, and a walking track. It doesn't have a playground anymore, but it could have.
Where is this located?
It's on the Bee's Road.
But I know we just voted to relocate her.
Well, you, you still relocate them in the other building.
But the, the bottom line is, I, I'm not opposed at all to any of that. Um, the problem that I have is that we applied for this specific way, and in the event that we wanna change that, we gotta get permission to do that. I believe wholeheartedly that we will not have a problem if we are allocating at least seventy thousand dollars a year to some visitation center for our FIP clients to utilize. I believe they'll accept that, but I have not gotten confirmation on that as of today.
I don't need to think it takes confirmation.
I don't know. I can leave here and ask, and hopefully get an answer today.
I think that's critical.
Yeah. But I want something, I wanna hear him, or have something.
If you can find, if you can get that changed, if you can get your grant, I think that, that would be qualitative. And, and like I said, I don't know if they, would they accept, would refer, but would they accept if you went to them and said, "Listen, I, I, I've got some, I'll match it with matching, with cash match rather than a facility."
Well, no, the, the cash isn't part of the match. He was gonna get the cash out of the obligation, money.
The thing, what I'm saying is that.
But in either way, it was a cash.
Is it a facility that's a critical aspect of it, or the, the money part that we're spending?
Okay, so when you say critical aspect of it, it requires, it requires a twenty-five percent match period.
Cash.
The fact that we were using our shelter, had already allocated for years, that's what I'm saying. We don't have to appropriate additional funds. Now, if you come back and you say, "We, we wanna appropriate additional funds, and we wanna get cash match," I believe that would qualify.
I'm just trying to be upfront with you, Judge, and I don't think this board's gonna approve the use of that facility as a matching part of it.
As, as a visitation.
As a visit, yeah.
But if this, if a visitation center. But if a visitation center is a critical part of the grant award, which is what I think I'm hearing you say.
It is, it is, this is what, this is what I've laid out in here. That is the reason we qualify for this grant, because we are instituting research-based best practices, things like using, using a former shelter for a visitation center. That's listed in, in Exhibit One.
But it's not why you qualify. It's not why you qualify.
Yes, ma'am, it is. It is why we qualify.
Can we commit, can we commit, in reference to the grant, can we commit that you will have a visitation center?
Right, to be determined with.
We'll decide then.
But not the shelter.
Uh, what do you, I'm sorry, what are you asking? You asking me, i- i- if the board commits to that?
Yeah, would that help you afford your drug court grant?
If, if we commit to a visitation center to be funded at least up to seventy thousand dollars a year, I personally am of the opinion that will qualify, but I don't have permission from the grant.
I, I need to know something today before it did go forward.
Well, we could, um, call a special meeting.
Till the end of the month.
We'll call a special meeting.
Call a special meeting. Okay.
Call a special meeting.
If, if next thing, if he finds out, we can call a special meeting to approve it.
So the question, just to be clear, the question that you need to ask is, the shelter is part of the reason to be used as a visitation area, as part of the reason that we got awarded this grant? Does it matter where the location of the shelter is?
I personally.
That's the question.
I, I personally do not believe that it matters where it's located.
I need to hear that from them.
I, I understand, I understand, and I mean, that's the question.
I need to ask, cause I know sometimes.
And all of that, I'll ask Smalling's question about whether or not, let's assume we abandon this idea of a visitation center, which I think is a bad idea, but let's assume we do, altogether abandon it. Y'all close down the shelter completely.
There you go again. See, that's not what we're saying. No, no, this is what I want.
You're saying you're taking it off your table.
So here's my bill. Here's the bill again, and I'll be as clear again as I can possibly be. What we're asking you to find out is if this grant is based on having a visitation place, does it matter where it is? Because we are not comfortable with you using Harrison County's shelter as a visitation place. We will then find you another place for your visitation, but all we need to know from you within the next day or so is if the grant, if you're still eligible for the grant, but with the visitation building being somewhere else.
With the understanding that whatever is allocated towards this new visitation center is at least seventy thousand dollars a year.
He committed to that. He said.
Well, I, I, I know, but I mean, that is the question I've got to ask.
He said that. He's already told.
He said it twice.
I want you to get this grant and this drug thing. I think that, and the people that you do need to hire to facilitate, as I understand it, facilitate keeping kids in, with the parents in the home. Am I right? That's what this, isn't that to, to go and counsel parents who are having drug problems? If you can get them help and get them straight, for lack of a better way to put it, then you can put the kids back in that home. I, I agree with that, and that's what I'm saying. And I'll do it, whether it's cash or visitat, get you another visitation. I'm probably a person, I don't know about them, but I'm willing to support that, but the grant, uh, the, the shelter, Harrison County's shelter is out.
On Maples.
On Maple, yeah.
That's out.
And we'll get you the grant, if, now, I know that's contingent upon them changing it.
Please, please.
I don't know.
Them being, we're making a decision on who.
The grant man.
Yes, the grant man.
The grant man.
Did you identify where your visitation area is in the grant?
Just now.
So that's what you need to change. You need to just tell them, that's no longer a possibility. So I'll have a visitation center, but I'll have to let you know where it's gonna be.
I can't remember the grant man. The grant manager's focusing in on that one itself, the philosophy is to have visitations, but why would they care where?
I don't, that's what I'm saying. I don't.
They should care where.
You can't say, I understand, but if you can get that to us, we'll have a special meeting.
I'll find that.
I don't have, I'm gonna back Florida.
I'll find that.
Okay, so what are we?
So if we have that settled in reference to, I, I presume, is that all as far as the grant?
Unless there's any other questions in relation to the grant.
I, I don't have any. I don't know about y'all.
So you would just get back with us when you talk about it?
Do y'all have a problem, or if, if the judge is willing to, going back now to the CASA thing?
I would.
If he would, if he's willing.
Yeah.
If he's willing, tell us if we go in a direct session.
I want to hear.
Okay, so we need to back into.
I want to, but I don't, I want to hear, I want to know.
We get it tomorrow. Tim, do you see a problem with that?
No.
We go in the exact session. See if that's cost of deal.
I think obviously.
I want to know what's the problem.
They got it.
And he's willing, he's willing. He's willing, is that you willing to?
I appreciate you letting me do this first time I have the opportunity.
Look Franco, I think the appropriate motion would be going to exact session, potential litigation. Can I make that motion? Tim?
The record is pending, a matter pending and potential litigations. And of course, the second session, I actually take it all in a discussion with the court. I'm gonna have to go back to general sessions, go to the court.
If y'all would permit me, I'd like to get the grant manager on the telephone so that she.
To answer her questions.
Ma'am?
To answer her questions.
Yes, to answer the questions you had.
Yeah, I want to hear another question. I just want to ask her that one question.
Did you make the motion to be in my office?
Yes.
I think it was something like that.
We all.
Take the tip.
I am in divorce, Mr. Roman, can you hear me? Jerome? I can hear you, can you hear me?
Let me see, you need a R T guy?
Get, yeah, get Robert in.
She can't hear me.
Rob, we'll get our R T guy in here, he can, he can get our number, he can get our everything we can hear, that'll be, that's all it's for.
Um, I, I miss the service, there's a one to see if you can call the doctor.
What number is it?
Um, two zero two.
Two zero two?
Five nine eight, nine eight zero six.
Freeze.
Two zero two? Five nine eight. Five nine eight, nine eight zero six.
Somebody sent me a message, I don't know how you do that. But it's on this, it's on this, I can't understand. The language I keep between because I don't have a. It might say, I want to hear, but it's somewhere.
Hi, this is Jerome.
Hi Jerome, this is Valerie Underwood from Harrison County calling you back.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, I have you on speakerphone with our Harrison County Board of Supervisors, so you could explain to them the process that we would need to go through in order to maybe amend the way that we put our proposal for the twenty-five percent match.
Sure, hello everyone, and thank you for the opportunity um to provide any clarifications that are required. Um, so the process that I was explaining to Valerie is that the award would be accepted um based on the special conditions and everything that are in your grant award now in just grants. Um, any modifications to the award can be made at any point. Um, we used to call them grant adjustment notices, but now with the just grant system, um, just grant system, you will see that they're called grant adjustment memorandum, G A M. Um, and that process will allow you the ability to make any changes to your grant, um, so be it with your match or anything else, um, and how you're coming up with the match and things like that. We can adjust that through a grant adjustment memorandum. I also explained to Valerie that this is the official way of making any changes to your grant. Um, it is very customary with all of our grantees that you get an award and something might change, and this is the official process of making those changes.
Right.
Jerome, this is Mike Dickinson, the youth court judge in Harrison County. Um, the question has come up in relation to, specifically in relation to the match. Um, the question on the table, uh, there's actually a couple of different questions on the table as I understand it. One is, we know how we have applied for it as using, utilizing matching funds through the shelter, which is, serves as a visitation center for our FIP participants. But instead of doing that, I don't know if you have the ability today to kind of explain to everyone uh whether or not it would be possible for us to, instead of using those funds, either A, allocate separate funds as a, strictly as a cash match, or B, if we were to establish another visitation center whereby the allocation would be the same or greater as to what we currently have, it just would be in a different location. You, I don't know if there's anything you can say about that or explain about that in terms of whether you think that might qualify or work. I don't know what the process is, but I think that is what this board is wanting to know.
Okay, so thank you for that question. I would need to go back, um, and I, I can pull up your grant in a little bit, but I need to go back to um all of the requirements and everything, um, just understanding the solicitation, which I'm also trying to pull that up as well. Um, I don't think that that clarification's on our end or that it would matter from us because we see grantees matching the grant in various ways. So from our perspective, as long as that match is satisfied, um, that's what we would be looking for. I know that's a general answer, but um I would have to look more specifically at your grant application and as well as the solicitation.
Okay, if, if I understood correctly though, are you saying that we have to accept it as we applied for it? And then later, when we want to try to reallocate the match or use the match from a different source, we have to, have to fill out one of those G A Ms?
Right, you would just, pretty much you would just document to us that you are changing your match source. Yeah, so it's, it's a pretty, I know it might sound complicated, but it's a pretty easy thing to do. Um, and again, the bottom line is with us, as long as the match requirement um is met for the grant, um, you're not gonna have any, any problems. But at this juncture, because the award has already been made, um, there's no way to retract it and make changes and things like that. Uh, at this point, we just want to clear the budget, um, and then move forward with any grant adjustment notice that may, may need to be made based on that original position.
Okay, and then just for the board's benefit, could you please identify yourself and your job and how you are connected to this grant?
Absolutely, I am Jerome Boyd, I am a program manager with the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention um here in D.C. And I do oversee um some of the family drug treatment court grants as well as some other tribal grants that I manage. So I am the official program manager um for this grant.
Okay, and with that, I want to turn it over to any, any of the board members who may have a question for you in follow-up.
Oh, I see, okay.
Beverly Martin has a question.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so my question is a little more clear. This application, part of this application was based on using our existing children's shelter as a visitation center. We do not want that to happen. So we just want to be sure that if we allow this grant to go forward, that we can, it's okay to relocate that visitation area to somewhere else. Or does it matter on this grant where the visitation center is?
Right, and thank you for the question. For the purposes of this grant, as long as you meet your match requirement and you have to make some adjustments to your program, you're still within the requirements of the grant. So just think about the grant requirement of a twenty-five percent match, and maybe you can't meet it or you have decided not to use um one strategy that you put in the application, but you have another strategy that you want to employ to meet that match.
But we've got the match, we can write.
That is the requirement.
We can actually write a check for the match, we're not worried about that. What we're, the question is, if we need, can we not allow the shelter as what was presented on the grant application? Can we locate that somewhere else? That's the question.
Yes, you can make, that would be called a change of scope grant adjustment um based on whatever limitations that you're finding that you're having within your program or, or your locality or jurisdiction. Whatever limitations that you're finding that you're having right now can make those, those changes. You can absolutely make those changes in your grant, and we generally call that a change of scope um grant adjustment. So that is pretty customary as well.
Hi Jerome, my name is Rebecca Powers, I'm a District Two County Supervisor, how are you today?
Oh wow, how are you?
Great, what I heard, um, you said as long as the match is satisfied. So are you saying that it is not even a requirement to have a visitation center?
I'm, I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying that if you need to make adjustments to your original proposal, you have a flexibility through what we call a grant adjustment memorandum. Um, I was also just reiterating that if you have to change the way you meet your match requirement for the purposes of the solicitation, as long as the match is satisfied, you would be within those requirements.
I have a question.
Well, I'm sorry, I still don't understand, is the train, is the visitation center, he said it's mandatory, is it mandatory for this grant?
Uh, oh, okay.
It's the location, I think the.
I'm just saying in general.
Okay, I, I.
The clarification you're seeking is the loc.
Clear, I do not have a copy of your grant in front of me right now. The first question that I was asked initially was a general question about match and the eligibility requirements. So you all want to have a specific question to go line by line about your grant, we can do that as well, but I would ask before the grant up. I am just saying for the general purposes of making adjustments to your programs as needed, we do have um a mechanism to make that happen.
I have one question, please, and that is, it was my understanding, and I might be wrong, that that, our shelter was toured and passed the test, it had to be toured.
Not by the grant.
By the, it wasn't by the grant.
I think your thing was.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I think it's for, I don't know for difficulty.
Okay.
I have, this, this is one of the members of the Board of Supervisors, ma'am. I think the most of the matter that we're trying to get, and I don't know if you're capable of answering this without going specifically to the grant again, but we don't have an objection to a visitation center. Our problem is the location of that visitation center. And in your opinion, as long as we have a visitation center, is the location uh critical to the grant? Or if we change the location, in your opinion, that shouldn't really adversely affect the grant?
No, as long as the mission of the grant, the work is being conducted, the families are being served and all of that can still be achieved. You have to change the location for whatever reason, I don't see that as a prohibition or anything. Like I said, I can review the grant in more detail um and provide some more information, but I don't, you know, I'm not sure what's happening locally um as to why that would be an issue as long as we can still meet the mission of the grant.
I think that answers our question, that answers, clarifies it for me.
And just, just so I'm clear on this, we, in order to get this grant, it has to be as accepted as applied for, but with the understanding that we can modify the matching portion of this at a later time to include the county's goals related to the shelter and visitation and all that.
No, no, what she said was that the location didn't matter as long as the service was there.
Right.
So what we're telling you now is the location's definitely gonna change. But according to this lady on the phone, the location doesn't matter to her as long as the service is provided. So why would we need to change anything?
We can just stay here. Well, no, I mean, it's not necessarily changing something, I think what she's saying, what Jerome is saying is that we have got to fill out some paperwork.
Not necessarily.
If it is, if it is different from what we've applied for in our application, as how we applied for it, that is my understanding of it. Um, but if I understood Jerome correctly, we, it's not something we can do prior to acceptance of the grant. It has to be accepted.
Right, and I think that, that is, I'm sorry, that is the key point that I'm making now. There's no way for us to change the award document or allow for these changes um based on where we are in the process. It would have to be accepted and you'll have to come back in for a modification.
Okay. Any other questions? More?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you ma'am.
Uh, I'm gonna see if I can figure out how to turn you off here, just one second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, okay.
Rebecca, you want to go with that?
Yes, but um, I don't think we approve it right now, I think we wait for the changes to be, to prove that they made the changes and then call a special meeting like you said.
No, we gotta take, we gotta take that the grant as written.
By November thirtieth.
By November the thirtieth, they not going, they not gonna make any altercations in that grant until after we approve it.
They cannot change.
The method, the method is, we have to accept it, as I understand it, we have to accept the grant as written.
Right.
And then once we accept that, then we can start the process of the modification.
The man be looking at a shelter, some visitation center somewhere else, or cash match or whatever, whatever they all are considering.
So we gotta accept the grant.
But legally, I mean, we've done orders here and orders have meant nothing, so.
That's my point, what promise do we have that this is gonna happen?
Guaranteed we have that.
If I may, this board does not, I mean, you're, this is nothing more than a grant. At some point in time, this board is gonna have to approve this expenditure at this point. It's not automatically when you approve today, it gets spent like it is in the grant.
That's right.
The board gonna have, there's a budget that's gonna have to be approved, how it's gonna be spent.
If it's not changed, we don't approve any expenditure.
And by the way, not only do you all have to approve a separate budget for this particular grant and everything it's going to do, the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Programs has to approve it as well. So I, and we won't get the authority to do anything at all until they approve our budget. And so, just so y'all know that, this, we are a step away from it, but the very next step, as I understood it, is to accept, and then after we do that, then we can look at. To operate your plan. And to move the shelter, I mean, move the visitation center or wherever y'all want to.
Today's only the ninth, I would really like to wait a few days, if y'all don't mind, to see how other things unfold within his court, and then we can approve it, it's the ninth, today's the ninth, and they have until the thirtieth.
But nothing's gonna happen with that. No modifications, they can't seek any modifications to the grant.
No, I understand that, but we still have time, I want to see how things unfold in his court before we approve this. We can do a special meeting?
Please, we, we have got to get started on this. This is an unbelievable opportunity for this county. Never before have we ever had eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars coming to this county to fight drug addiction. This is an opportunity of a lifetime.
But there are other opportunities of lifetimes that our children are living without day by day. So let's talk about that, if y'all want to. So let's talk about that if you don't want to go into executive session.
We'll go back.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Guys, we can.
Okay.
When we come out of the executive session, we can go.
Yeah, we want to talk to you in executive session.
We have a motion to go into executive session.
We did.
You have the second. All those in favor, seven, five, six.
We're gonna stick to reason.
Oh, the reason.
The reason is potentially against me personally.
We have motion and we have the second. We've had discussion. All those in favor, seven, five, six, nine.
They're dressed the last item on the agenda, which is the grant, and I would move to retable that for, till we get a little bit more information.
I move, move the table. Second, all in favor, can you come by saying aye? All opposed. Motion carried.
Now, do I need to make a motion to recess, knowing that we probably have to meet again on this grant because we're up against a deadline?
Good, I noticed a special meeting. It's a little good, but I want to get one item. It's probably a better way to keep your agenda rolling.
Oh, okay. But do I need to make a motion to adjourn or recess?
Yeah, just adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I don't want to meet.
You can get to a special meeting here for the youth court.
It's like the hurricane heads.
That's fine.
So motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A second.
The motion, you're taking all those in favor, can you say aye? All opposed.